All right, everybody. Welcome to our Selma City Council regular meeting on October 7th, 2025 at 6:19 PM in the Selma City Council chambers at 1710 Tucker Street at Selma, California, 93662. The teleconference phone number is 1301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment part of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Notice to meeting attendees, members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of threatening or abusive language or other acts which disturb, disrupt, or impede or otherwise render the orderly conduct of a city council meeting infeasible. Tonight, we are honored to have Pastor Jose Alvarez from the Iglesia Antioquia and the Legacy Youth Center who kindly volunteered to do our invocation tonight. Welcome Pastor.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, Chief Police, and Liz Martinez, Public Works, everybody that made March for Jesus successful this year. Thank you, guys. It was awesome for having you guys march with us and it was just a great time and we brought a new spark to our community. So we're just excited and we're running with that spark and hopefully we can make a full blown fire and get the city back where it's supposed to be at. Thank you, guys, for participating and thank you guys for everything you guys did for us. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we just thank you, Heavenly Father. We just ask you, in the name of Jesus Christ, that you continue to bless this board, Heavenly Father. And God, that everything that goes forward, that your Holy Spirit just be upon them and direct them, Heavenly Father. God, we just put this meeting and we just thank you for the privilege to serve you and we thank you for the opportunity to get to do what we get to do. In the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you and we love you with our hearts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor for your leadership. Everybody please stand for the flag salute. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, individed.
Well, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Avalos?
Here.
Councilmember Osagara?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted on in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54954.2B. City Attorney, do we have that tonight?
Nothing to add or delete, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. Now we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the regular meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not in the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Do we have any oral communications tonight? We have our colleague from the Department of Insurance. Welcome, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, as well as our first responders and city staff here in the audience, as well as the citizens of Selma. Good evening, my name is Richie Saivong. I'm with the California Department of Insurance here on behalf of Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the Department of Insurance itself. We are the state agency that's here to assist you consumers with fraud and abuse when it comes to your insurance, whether it be life, home, fire, auto, anything under the sun that is insurance. We are here to protect you from those insurance companies. We're here to hear you out on any issues that you may have. But whether it's filing complaint, understanding coverage, or resolving issues with your insurers, you can visit our California Department Insurance website at insurance.ca.gov or give us a call at 800-927-4357. One thing is, if you call us and we don't answer, leave us a voicemail. We'll call you back in two minutes. That's our guarantee there. I will be reaching out to our city council members and the mayor to see how well we can work together in expanding outreach and what the Department of Insurance does to help your constituents. Lastly, I would love to come and present, do a presentation in a future city council meeting regarding an update on the current insurance marketplace and reforms that are going on with the department. And we wish to partner with you in the future and thank you for your time.
Thanks, we'll take you up on that.
Yes, sir.
Jason, McCall Avenue, Dinova Avenue, McCall Village. I have many, many thanks to Moses Stites and Driver Gabriel for the transit ride to Selma Live. Sorry, didn't get Gabriel's last name. He was terrific. We had a wonderful time that night. He picked three of us up at McCall Village at 5:00 PM and brought us home at 8:00. One had a walker and he helped her get in and out with a ramp into the bus. I could not have gone if I had not, if I had to drive or park and walk a long ways to the park. I want to ask all who hear this to please vote yes on Measure C, which funds this fabulous service for the elderly. Excuse me. Thank you to all the hard workers who made Selma Live such a smashing success. So many families enjoying good food, music, and visiting friends. While in the food line, many came up saying hello to friends they hadn't seen in years, like a big family reunion. I know many of you worked nonstop that night. My heart felt thanks to you. So many folks had a wonderful night thanks to your hard work. Now let's consider how this came about. A Selma Live team made good decisions and planned the whole thing to perfection. Thank you to that team. You made this happen for Selma. Thank you to our new Selma City Council for caring about the residents and wanting to see Selma come to life. After a few years of conflict and disagreements dragging us down, we can now see a new day dawning for Selma and its residents. Thanks to the doers on the new council, keep up the good work. It's appreciated by many.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Teresa Herrera. I was thrilled to discover on my birthday while vacationing in Mexico that the city of Selma was installing our new pickleball lights. This wonderful surprise is a testament to the power of community collaboration. I would like to extend my sincerest gratitude to the dedicated individuals who made this project possible, including Mr. Michael Hahn, Public Works Director, Yuliesius Maravilla, Public Works Supervisor, David Horn, City Manager, Liz Fletcher, Community Service Director, Public Works Staff, City Council, and Jacob Box from Lighting America. I also appreciate Sylvia Luna's exceptional customer service in helping me gather this information. I would like to invite and challenge our community to come together and experience...
Thank you. Okay. Test one, two.
Okay, can we start over? Good evening, my name is Peggy Keating-Bolm and I live at the McCall Village Mobile Home Park in Selma. I am here to speak to you tonight about Selma's feral and stray cats. I will share with you the huge need for a TNR program. TNR stands for trap, neuter, or spay and release the spayed and neutered cats. I began a Facebook group assisting the cats of Selma, excuse me, assisting the abandoned cats of Selma three years ago. We have 244 members. My idea was to begin a TNR program in Selma to reduce the number of kittens being born, which keeps the feral cats healthier and more manageable. Due to very few volunteers and donations, I changed the focus of educating the public about TNR and fundraising. In the past three years, Kim Eskew and I TNR'd 61 feral cats and 95% of the friendly strays and socialized kittens were adopted out. Not a huge number, but each cat helped is one less reproducing cat. Ill cats were taken to Fresno for help. As long as I have donations, I will provide cat supplies and will help pay for cat TNR surgeries for those in need. I know many residents in Selma and the surrounding towns have been helped, have helped the cats for over 15 years. The needs of the hundreds of cats roaming in Selma cannot be met by the residents alone. The staff at the city shelter are polite and helpful, the shelter is clean, and the outside has room for dogs to run. It would be great if the shelter had a sink to provide running water for the animals' care. The staff is already knowledgeable and capable to run a TNR program. With an increase of a few thousand dollars for TNR, the cats benefit as does the city. Cats throughout the city need help, from the neighborhoods to the downtown businesses to the restaurants. I can talk to you privately about the benefits of a well-run program. My added desire for enforcing the laws of our growing number of dumped and abandoned cats and dogs. Feral cats are protected by California's anti-cruelty laws. It's illegal to kill, maim, or poison a feral cat. Dumping and releasing a cat is a different, in a different location is illegal. The result can be $1,000 to $20,000 fine. Presenting school programs two times a year on pet care and ownership, plus what feral and stray cats are, would be helpful. Handouts to take home in English and Spanish concerning the legalities of pet ownership may educate the adults as well. The public needs education and a giant push to care. Beginning with children is the best way to start, in my opinion. I would be happy to further discuss the TNR program with you. Thank you, and then I have some information for you.
Thank you, and we'll have, at the end of departmental reports, we'll have a five-minute break, and if anyone wants more information about the TNR program, they can see Peggy at that time. Are you planning on staying a little while for the meeting right now?
Sure, what I'm doing is introducing the idea of let's get it going and meeting and learning about it with whomever it has to be to get this thing at least thought about.
Great, hang out a few more minutes and someone, people will talk to you. Thank you. Anyone else with oral communications at this time?
Teresa Solis, I just wanted to ask if it was possible to either move item 2.1 to the regular agenda or at least give the audience time to discuss that because I know that the residents that live in that area that's being proposed for annexation are here and wanted to address the council.
It's on consent right now. We're getting there.
Well, that's why I said, I don't know, kid, if you wanted to move it from consent to the regular agenda so that everyone would have the opportunity to address the council or just at least pull it from consent so that people can address.
When we get to consent, we'll decide. Thank you. Anybody else with oral communications? Anybody online or on the phone?
Stand by, Mayor, have one person raising their hand.
Someone wants to talk.
Savannah, you're online to talk?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Selma City Council, my name is Savannah Cantarsi. It is my first time participating in one of your meetings, but thank you for the opportunity for me to speak today about an issue that impacts both the animals and the residents of Selma, and that is the growing number of stray and community cats. I personally reside in Fresno and assist with many rescues. I foster as well, and I noticed that across Central Valley, cities have adopted or are trying to adopt to a TNR program because they've seen measurable success in the program reducing stray cat populations humanely and effectively. TNR does stop breeding cycles, it does improve the community cats' health, and prevents the endless cycles of kittens being born into hardship. Selma has an opportunity to take proactive steps as well. Selma can implement a city-supported TNR program, and that can be done by partnering with local rescues and veterinarians, or allocating small grants for spay and neuter, or supporting volunteers like Peggy who are already doing this work. All those steps could dramatically reduce intake numbers and ease the burden on the city shelter. At the same time, investing in and expanding the current shelter would give Selma the infrastructure it needs to manage animals compassionately and sustainably. A larger, better-equipped shelter with more space will not only help animals but also improve the public safety and community health. Another area that I think is equally important is education with community outreach, teaching residents about the benefits of TNR, the proper care for cats and dogs, and any available low-cost services that are offered for cats and dogs. I believe that Selma can turn what feels like an overwhelming issue into a community-driven success. So I think the goal is just not to save cats, but it's also to create a balanced humane approach that benefits everyone, the city of Selma, the residents of Selma, and the animals that share the Selma community. So with the city's support, I think Selma can become a model for responsible animal welfare in the Central Valley, just like other organizations out there. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see some steps moving forward to help the abandoned cats and dogs within Selma. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else online with a comment?
Mayor, I see no more hands raised at this time.
That will bring the matter back to council for oral communications and move on to our first item of the night, which is our one and only special presentation and informational item, Safe Routes to School Update. FPT Manager King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item has been brought up at prior council meetings. Fresno Council of Government has a request for applications currently out for submittal to agencies. Staff developed four project proposals that are included in your agenda package. Since the agenda package has gone out, staff has met with the Selma Unified School District to garner comments from them and to try and understand what their organization views as the highest priority so that we can, if there's a limited amount of funding, work to try and accommodate the needs of the school district as well. In addition, we have reached out to Caltrans and also garnered a letter of support for one of the proposals already, which would be the Rose Avenue project, and David Horn is here to provide additional details regarding the four proposals.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In the staff report for this item, we included some sheets that show information about all four of the projects. So we have applications nearly completed for all four, are presenting this as an informational item so that the council is aware as to what we're presenting to COG. And as quick background, they obviously have funding available to us, the small cities. So our, what we've understood from the council and our recommendation is to get these four applications submitted with, we'll have to state them in order of priority so that if awarded, they will try and award our highest priority first. So anyway, in the packet, the four projects that we've provided, the first one is crosswalk improvements and sidewalk construction in the Rose and Olive location near Woodrow Wilson. There are two crosswalks on Rose Avenue. If you remember, recently, we've done the Tactical Urbanism Pilot Program where we improved one of those crosswalks. The point of that was to study some potential changes to that crosswalk to show how we can improve safety and reduce speeds. So both of those crosswalks are included in this application. There's a temporary stop sign on Olive Avenue between Brettlinger and Woodrow Wilson. There needs to be some improvements there to make that stop sign permanent and to improve that crosswalk for safety. And then the last part of that project is there are some segments of sidewalks on Locust Street and Olive Streets south of Rose that currently are just dirt. And so a major part of this grant or application with Measure C is to try and fill in any missing sidewalks. So we're including that for this section. Our hope and plan for both the crosswalks on Rose Avenue is to include what's called the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Those are the buttons where the kids can push a button and the lights start to flash to try and alert vehicles. So we're planning on trying to include those both for those crosswalks. Project two in your packet is a project up by Abraham Lincoln Middle School, two crosswalks just west of the school, across Orange Avenue. These two crosswalks, we've talked to the school district about, they've asked us to look at them and see what we can do to improve those. Public Works has improved some of the striping, but we see the potential to improve both of those crosswalks with what are called bull bouts. So we're bringing the curb closer to the middle of the street so that kids, when they have to cross or don't have to walk so far across the street, and cars can see them before they get out into the crosswalk. The proposed portion of this is very similar to what we did on that tactical urbanism project near the high school on Thompson Avenue. So that again was a pilot program to see if that would actually, we could show speeds being slowed down with the traffic, which it did, and we have some results from that study that we're going to include in this application. At Abraham Lincoln, one of the crosswalks has buttons and lights, the other doesn't. We're planning to make both of them consistent, help the kids be able to use those in a much safer fashion. The third project in the packet is at Rose Avenue, just west of Heartland School. Rose Avenue has quite a bit of a stretch with no sidewalk. It is dirt along the north edge of it. The funding from Measure C has a high priority in trying to fill in the sidewalk, so we feel like this is a good project that will score well. At the same time of filling in that sidewalk, the intersection at Rose Avenue and Thompson Avenue, the geometry is a little odd with Thompson Avenue churning the angle. There's a couple of crosswalks there that we feel could be improved by changing some of the geometry, adding some of the push buttons, moving them so that the sight distance is improved for vehicles coming down Thompson Avenue. And then similarly on this project on the west side at Mitchell Avenue, there is a crosswalk now, but we feel like we could improve that with better striping and make sure that the curb ramp is accessible. We presented these to Selma Unified, this project on Rose Avenue was one, the project that they had asked if we could prioritize it. So taking in their advice, we wanted to let the council know that they would, they would like this project to be number one, and then we ordered the other two, the other three equally. And then the last, the last project, there's quite a few crosswalks that are yellow, so those are the school crosswalks throughout the city that we feel, you know, needs to be updated with new paint. The MUTCD guideline, which is our manual for uniform traffic control, has certain crosswalk striping details that are, that are a little bit, they're called high visibility. So it's not just two yellow lines, it's yellow lines with large yellow blocks in the middle. It's called a ladder-style crosswalk. So we have catalogued all of the crosswalks citywide that could be upgraded to that MUTCD standard. Fourth project, it's scalable, that if the county runs out of money or if we can get funding for others, the other three, if we by chance are able to get funding for this, we'll do as many crosswalks as we get funding for prioritizing the ones closest to the schools. Those are the four projects that we've worked with staff, both from Public Works, planning, talking to Selma Unified, and are proceeding with those applications.
Okay. Council, have any questions for the city engineer at this time?
What about speed bumps?
Yep. Speed bumps aren't a part of any of these applications based on how the tactical urbanism pilot program has showed that we can actually slow speeds down.
What about the children that have been injured and hurt and everything at some of the schools? I mean, is that, isn't that important or I don't understand?
Extremely important, and that's why we're doing those studies to show how we can actually slow traffic down. There are crosswalks on the east side of the high school and the west side of the high school, which are already funded through an H-SIP program. So those, those were funded, are in the process of being designed, so those will improve the crosswalks on both sides of the high school based on the report from the Tactical Urbanism Project. We are, we are looking at speed bumps or, they're not called speed bumps anymore, little speed tables, they're smaller rubber kind of mats, they're temporary. So we are looking at it and trying to see if that's a useful, you know, tool for different things or other, other aspects that we have.
When you go to different apartment complexes, they have a me slow down, they slows you down, so it does work. Because I go by the high school all the time and I'm cruising along, all of a sudden it comes people driving really fast, so all that orange stuff and everything right there, it's not really slowing people down.
Right, so we've studied it before, the tactical urbanism and afterwards, and they've, they've studied the speeds and you can see, we are trying to look at it from a subjective standpoint. We've heard, heard the council.
You know what, I appreciate everything you do, but one child getting hurt or killed is too many, in my opinion.
Councilman, can I make a comment?
Sure.
One of the considerations with speed bumps is the impact of first responders responding to incidents that occur throughout the community. And so there's been significant research and findings when it comes to different types of traffic calming solutions to communities. And so one thing to consider with the placement of speed bumps is the impact that that's going to have for us to respond to an incident, as well as the, the ability for whatever traffic calming measure or a speed bump, for example, to mitigate an incident as well. And so for the fire department, it's crucial for us to be able to get to the locations that we need to get to in a timely manner, and schools, as you know, are sometimes subject to high-scale, very timely incidents that occur across the country, such as school shootings and those kinds of things that require, you know, huge responses and very immediate, you know, and timely responses by us as well as law enforcement. And so, you know, we, we consider those things as we make, you know, hardened results to try to mitigate the, or prevent injuries to students. And so the different traffic calming measures like the city engineer had mentioned, such as the traffic tables or the speed tables, the bull bouts or just the different types of street furniture, you know, there are solutions that can have pretty successful results with, with slowing down speed and not negatively impacting our timely response when necessary. And so just something to consider for council, and that's certainly something that's considered by the city staff as we look at plans for those types of traffic calming measures and as we come up solutions to make sure our community is safe.
I sure do. So we, I mean, I don't know how many times the council has requested to put traffic calming measures, including whatever you want to call them, but raised parts of the pavement, and the city, I really thought the city was, was doing it, you know, because you look at Rose Avenue at Orange, and you got the zigzag, and you got the ladder, isn't that a ladder crossing now? And you got those speed bumps. They are, but they are just pro- And you got those speed bumps. They are, but they are just protuberances, big word for small bumps. Not really enough to impede or to, you you know, uh mess with trannies. That was been another objection over the years that it messes with vehicles. Um, suspensions. Um, so it's already been used and it's been on and it's on Rose Avenue. Where our incredible um EMS paramedic team goes from their very temporary quarters right now. And from what I understand, it hasn't impeded the progress of ambulances and and messed with the speed. Is that right, chief? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, in that particular case, yeah.
So if you put the little nodules, we'll call them, in front on right. And uh Thompson, which is what we asked, didn't we, council? Do we ask? Do we request that?
We addressed that issue.
Okay, um, if we did that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't seem, it would seem to be a happy medium. It would seem to be not too much. And but enough to get um motorists' attention. And so what I'd like to bring up tonight um from our perspective before we hear from the public. Um, and we definitely want to hear from the public is. Um, would the engineering department um consider council's input on this and add? A another number to the priority, and that would be the speed nodules. Similar to Rose Avenue. Before this goes in, I, what is it, the thirteenth or the fourteenth? Is that the deadline for the cog applications? So we would, we could take a vote if you want.
Oh, I I think I understand. So it's. Uh, the when you say nodule, that that's what's at Rose Avenue now.
Right.
Little dots.
Yeah, little dots. Yeah, those are.
That's right.
Yeah.
Little reminder dots.
Just to in slow traffic down. And it does slow down. If you go and hey, I see it myself.
It works there.
Hey.
No, and we and we can add that. That's a good input that we can add that to all of these projects, wherever there's a crosswalk.
And I think.
That if that's what.
They're not really speed bumps. They're just reminders.
Yeah.
You know, because people are texting, they're looking at the radio, they've got so much technology. In their cars now, it's easy to get distracted and just something to bring somebody back to. Hey, you know, you're driving, you're driving on the street. So if you could add those, that'd be, that'd be great.
Look at that and work with the city departments as well.
So i- if I could jump in real quick and add to some of that. First, I want to make sure that we have clarification for mainly for the citizens. The buttons that you're referring to are notification buttons and any of the high speed trafficked areas like Rose Avenue. Um, we we are looking at the des- for the design of that, putting those in place to. They're a precursor to give you a heads up like, hey, there's a crosswalk coming up. A speed bump is an asphalt. Berm that is basically built across the lane like you have in the shopping centers to keep people from going. At high speeds and it, I mean, it like does this to your car. It's not a good thing. So I want to make sure that we're clear on what. Speed, speed bumps and what we try to avoid because of response time and the buttons.
I don't think we're asking for big nineteen seventies era undulations in the road like that one in Fresno, which will take your transmission. And if you hit it at star skiing or speed.
I just need to clarify that. So everybody was on the same page.
Like the one you had on Rose.
Just a reminder, just reminder buttons. Yeah. Do we have any comments from the public? Thank you for that, director.
Solis, my daughter, my granddaughter got hit two years ago. I'm gonna show you guys the picture. Look. You don't put these bumpers, a month later, somebody died. I'm just asking for bumpers for the schools for all these kids, not just my granddaughter and her friend that got hit. You know what? I thank everyone for your prayers. She was in a coma for two minutes. I thought I was gonna lose her. And she's my only granddaughter. You know, we need bumpers for all these kids, not just mine. Look in Parlor, they have bumpers in all the schools. You guys are the fire, you guys are complaining because your guys' cars go slow right there and then go fast. These kids are important. Do we want to see somebody die again? A month later, somebody died right there. I am fighting for my granddaughter, for all these kids to get bumpers. You guys want, don't want to do it? Because of your guys' fire and your, your trucks. This is my granddaughter. She was in a coma for two minutes. Listen to me. I was lost her, you guys. I prayed right there. That's God. Please wake her up. I just, I was lost. You guys don't know what I went through. When I got that phone call, they told me she got hit. I was going to Fresno. I don't know where I was going. I called the police station. They didn't know. I didn't know what to go. I had to call my sister and tell her. She's the one that was driving from me. We didn't know where to go. He did this. Police didn't, police station didn't know where my granddaughter was at. You know, I'm just asking, please put bumpers before somebody else dies. I park over there at the high school. My granddaughter's out. I still see. Ki- uh kids walking, the cars are still passing. You guys, look in Parlor, go to Parlor, they have bumpers. You guys are complaining. I still have my granddaughter, but she's not the same. And the lights, she, they press the light, it's that lady that hit her, still hit her. Those lights don't have help in back of the high school. I'm just asking you guys. I'm fighting for all the kids. Please, listen to me. I've been coming. I haven't been coming because I've been going to funerals. You know, I am going to show up until you guys listen to me. If I have to sleep out here until you guys listen to me, I will. Please, you guys, and I thank the mayor for everything. I thank all you guys up there. Please listen to me. If you want to see her picture, I'll show you her picture. She was in a coma. All the scars, she couldn't even walk.
Thank you, Nina. Sure, come on up.
I am very sorry that someone was hit.
Say your name again.
I'm sorry, Peggy Keating Bull. I live in Selma, McCall Village, Mobile Home Court. I'm very sorry that she was hit and her friend. Can there be a combination of? The bigger bumps, the buttons? Can we get like where the crossings are? Can we have something a little bit more drastic than the little? Buttons to make us, make them slow down because that will make. McCall Village has these bumps that we've been trying to get rid of for years. They're everywhere. And uh, I don't, we don't care for them, but you know, we got them. But they'll slow you down, and if you don't, then your car will get, will get damaged. But I think if uh if you put your heads together, there's a combination where you can. Slow it down and then really slow it down. I understand the fire uh departments need to be able to get somewhere quick. If you turn on the TV, you want somebody there quick. Firemen, policemen. So we don't want to slow anyone down so much that they can't get there. But we need to have some uh help with the areas where kids are crossing maybe a little bit more. So a combination, you know, you. Out, you know how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten fifty seven Mill Street, Rose Robertson. So here we are again. Over and over and over again. Us taxpayers are stating we want speed bumps. We want something there so we don't continue to have fatality. And here we are getting told why we cannot get them. You go to other cities. I think this city just needs to go to other cities and get some um classes on how they did it. They didn't get rid of their first responders' vehicles. They did, they still do what they gotta do. I I I walked at all these other cities all the time and there's the speed bumps and there's first responding, responding to what they need to respond. You know why? Because kids and people walking are more important than a vehicle. Sorry. Learn how to drive carefully around schools. There's children around there. There's grandkids. There's. People walking, grandparents. There's a lot of people taking their kids to school. It's time for a change. We 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 come here to to tell you what we want as taxpayer. Paying your salaries over and over. It's always how we can't do it. It is time to do it. Thank you.
Teresa Solis, um, I was driving on Second Street the other day at the water. Where it's a Washington school. It's not a grade school anymore. I'm not sure what is being held there, adult school, I think. Um, those square lights that blink right at the corners, those work, but there's nothing across. A second street at all, and that's a four lane. Street right there, two lanes in each direction. And. The trees were kind of covering that blinking on on the one side at Washington School. Um, had I not been paying attention, it could have been very easy to miss that light that was blinking and somebody was waiting to cross the street there. I don't know. The the lights that light up across the street completely, or is that something that's? Only put in certain locations. Um, I know they have them in front of the high school. Um, they don't have them by Jackson School off of right and and um Huntsman. They don't have them in there and the kids. Are at that four way stop all the time, but further down in. Going north on Wright Street, they do have them. They do have the blinking lights in the middle of the street. So what? What criteria do you need to put the blinking lights across the street? So that they're more visible than just those little squares at the end. So and like I said, at that particular intersection of water and um Second Street, it's four lanes. So if you don't see that. Thing blinking, you're not, you could hurt somebody, whether it's a child or whether it's an adult, people trying to cross the street there. I just, I noticed it because I was driving there and and it just happened that they hit the lights to. To cross, but you could barely see the thing blinking at the end that somebody was intent intending to cross.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to address a couple of those comments. Um. So um first off, I want to make sure that the the council and public understands that we're, we are um looking at best measures. Um, to install for the traffic calming around these areas. To the comments just made, one of the things that uh the the engineering firm that we are working with currently in that program for tactical urbanism. A and M, we have already discussed. Not only the uh install of the flashers that are communicating. So if you're on one side, you hit it, it flashes both sides of the streets. But they have new technology that actually, when you hit the button, the flashers go off and it also has. LED lumen lights on both sides that lights the entire crosswalk up for nighttime activity. And on top of that, they also have the buttons like we have on Rose Avenue, but they are permanently installed. On the crosswalk line so that it actually flashes the crosswalk as well. So. We are looking, staff is currently looking at all of those options through the tactical urbanism program. And those have been discussed on multiple occasions. Uh, I will be addressing with my staff tomorrow, the tree cut back on Second Street, the adult tree, the adult school, those trees are very mature. They grow fast. I've had them cut back previously to tonight because of me driving through from the dog park and seeing the same issue. So I will address that tomorrow to make sure that there's clear line of sight and if you're traveling on that road. But I can tell you that um both intersections at both ends of the school on Second Street are currently working, but we're having issues with the batteries. We've replaced them twice in the last six months. We're looking at replacing those specific intersections as fast as we can fund them. Uh, and and adding those extra, the extra um. Uh, features like the lights for the crosswalk and the buttons on the crosswalk line that actually flash. So. Those things are being addressed um in these uh studies that we're currently doing.
At some point, do we want to have beacons at every single crosswalk?
We we are working towards that and I I can tell you right now that my staff's direction from me for the last year is that we are focusing on thermoplas striping and crosswalks at all of the school locations. So that is our primary focus.
Um, good evening, um, Mayor and Council, um, Ramirez, um, I'm just trying to understand the logic of the whole. First responders and the whole speed bands, whatever you want to call them. Um, as it was said earlier, you know, other towns have them. It's not an issue, you know? At the end of the day, us taxpayers pay for those vehicles. I mean, I don't, I couldn't understand if it's your own vehicle, your own personal vehicle, but you're you're dealing with taxpayers' vehicles. Just do it. You know, what's it gonna, who's gonna hurt? If you wreck, if you wreck the vehicle, you hurt the vehicle, just replace it. We pay for it at the end of the day. Why is it, why is it, why is there always an obstacle when it comes to something that we want, the community? The council, if there's always this battle, there's always this like, no, we can't do it. No, this, there's always some kind of excuse. And it's sad and I'm sorry, but if you can't do your job and you're just gonna put obstacles and make excuses, then you're not fit out, then you're not cut out for the job. Council, we voted you guys in. Do what you gotta do. Thank you.
Any else with a comment? Anybody online or on the phone with a comment?
Standby, Mayor. Caller, you're allowed to talk? Caller, you're online?
Uh, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, my name is Stella Ramirez and I'm calling in in regards. Uh, to what's going on right now about the speed bumps at schools here in Selma. Um, why does there have to be a study? To, you know, think about a life that can be taken. No, there should not be. There there should not be a, you know, that should not even be taken into consideration about whether, you know, a study, no. This should just be done. There's already been incidents that have happened that should prove to you that they are needed at every school. Um, I've heard a lot of people complain on social media about speeding. So I think that we should just not even study this and just put them on there. Without a doubt, without just not even thinking about it. And let me ask you something. All you people there that are talking about this study. If you had a grandchild or your child that went to a school. And they, you know, and they were crossing there and they got ran over. And this could have been prevented with a speed bump. How would you feel if your child or grandchild was to be killed? When that, this was talked about months ago and this could have been prevented. Put yourselves, and this person that went up there. Anita Gonzalez, put yourself in her position. She almost lost her grandchild. You know, this is a priority. This is the, uh, our, our safety for our children is a priority in the city of Selma. And I just, you know, stand with this, that it should be done without a doubt. Thank you.
Any else with a comment?
Hey, I see no one with their hands raised this time.
You, Councilman Trio?
Yep, Mike, you know, you you elaborated that you were talking with your staff. Um, the question I have for you is, have you uh? Um, have you budgeted or come up with a number of what it would cost to actually? Uh, whatever, whatever you guys are planning with staff together in regards to what what it's going to take to. Put them up. Are you um, are you going to come to us with a budget item and or an amount or? As you speak with your staff and do your.
So to to say that I have come up with a number to citywide go through and correct this issue, I have not. Uh, we are currently looking at several different options. Um. Part of, part of the reason, number one, we got a really nice grant to do this study. This is not coming from our taxpayers' dollars to the city from the general fund. I want to be clear about that. Um, and this study is needed because there are so many different apparatuses that you can install. To calm traffic. Every intersection is case specific. So in order to do it correctly. So we don't have any more accidents with kids getting run over, we have to put in certain placards and. And actually go out, we have men and women out there with speed guns that are literally sitting there during drop off and pickup time. They're they're like monitoring that. It's all getting documented. It's all put on a chart. Um, I can tell you that right now we're looking at the the Garfield Elementary at the intersection where the drop off is. We have the most modern high tech. They're called communicators. There's no infrastructure required. Um, they communicate through antenna, they run off a battery. Um, they work fabulously and they're all leaned together. So no matter which button you hit, it lights up all four corners. They're all flashing. Um, those currently right now are going for almost seven thousand dollars apiece. That is just a purchase and that's just the flasher. That's not the buttons across the intersection. That's not the buttons across the intersection. It's not the LED lights lighting up the crosswalk. It's just the basic communicator.
Real quick question.
Yes.
In regards to 7,000, can you guys do the maintenance work to actually?
We can install them and we do maintain them, uh, Councilman Trio. And the installation is literally core drilling a hole in the sidewalk. Placing the pole in the sidewalk, concreting that hole back, that pole into the hole. And then mounting the gear and then we turn it on and it communicates.
Okay. And can you also, what do you call those little things you put on the road again?
The buttons.
The buttons, okay. Do you install the buttons also?
If we go that route, um, that probably part of that will have to be subbed out because we actually have to saw cut across the road. And it's kind of like the loop system works at a traffic signal. Um, those things are daisy chain looped all the way across and they're hooked to the pole. So there is infrastructure. We, can we do it? Again, council member, there's nothing that my staff cannot do. But is that the route we would want to go? We would have to look at that and weigh those options.
That's, that's where I'm at. One of the, the other question I have is, um, I understand the importance of this. But I also understand the liability that the municipal government carries, understanding that we offset a road structure that offsets. And and I appreciate because of the fact that we represent the community. We represent the no sayers and the yes sayers. And tomorrow morning, my question is to our legal is if an individual has an accident or fire chief. The question I have is if an individual has heart attack and you're outgoing to pick him up. And he runs into a a road, uh, a speed bump that delays the speed. Does that individual come back to the city? Can they use that on the cities? And I say this because, I mean, we're in municipal government, everybody picks, you're in California, so.
I would have to defer the liability component to our city attorney for that. But I I think that it's important to recognize a couple of things in this discussion. And I think that all the points of view here uh, tonight are very important and they're all very relative to the decisions that are being made. For speed bumps themselves, when we say speed bumps, we're talking about a very specifically built thing. And there's, there's many types of speed tables, which is like a two inch raised rubber device. There's all types of different definitional type terms. And so when I hear the term speed bump, I'm picturing what was described with the Starsky and Hutch jump type of thing. For us, my concern is by no means our fire engines or ambulances or anybody's vehicles or anything like that. What I'm concerned about is time and time for us is tissue, meaning like the muscle of your heart. It's your blood, you only have so much of it. And so if it's leaking out of your body, you only get so much of that. All of the concerns of our citizens are 100% valid. I don't want to ever have to go to a student or a child or an adult that gets hit by a car ever. That would be my preference. What's in question here is the types of, um, I don't know, traffic calming measures that we select. And so when it comes to speed bump specifically, again, that asphalt thing. There's, there's many other options that we can utilize, that we can all discuss that are fire department and first responder friendly. That also can have very similar effects. And so as we have this group discussion, I think, you know, one thing that may be beneficial is to have just an informational of what the different definitions of all the traffic calming measures are. As we're having these discussions and internally, um, we have those discussions as far as, you know, when when you were a citizen says. Uh, speed bump, you know, what we think about is just in general terms, something that we can put on the road to slow down drivers, right? Not specifically the definitional term of what a speed bump is. And so, you know, again, for us, um, you know, there's school shootings that happen and and children get shot and they bleed out. And the difference for us of having a viable victim and a not viable victim is seconds, literally. And so, you know, the difference of us getting to that individual in a timely manner and the same for the police department. If they're slowed down to stop the threat, um, how many more victims are impacted by that? And so we consider all of those things as we make these decisions. Whether we make that decision for one individual or a group of individuals, we still have to be, you know, we have to think about all those things. The good thing is, is there's engineers that that put a tremendous amount of work into designing things that. One, don't limit first responders and also slow down drivers in those areas. And so as we say the words, um, you know, we hear you about the things. But as as we are asked questions about technical terms that we utilize in our vocabulary, we just want to be very clear on what those things are. So whether it's the buttons, the speed tables, speed bumps, you know, the bulb outs, there's, there's so many different things that that we can utilize. For the same same result. And and so I think there may be just some confusion, you know, when we get questions about specifics about what, you know, what we're all talking about. I think we're all want the same goal. We want our students to be safe when they walk to work or walk to school. We want our citizens to be safe when they're going wherever they're going. And and believe me, I I hear you and I sympathize with you and I want to go give you a hug, to be honest with you. I want to protect your students and all the other students you worry about. And so we hear that and believe me, like, that that's very important to us. And that's why this study is so crucial, so so we can, you know, proceed accordingly and make sure we have solutions that satisfy all of the things, you know, as we as we move forward.
I have a question I just wanted to ask in regards to the tech, the tactical urban project. You know, we talked about the different measures. So you just mentioned a two inch bumper, rubber bumper, speed bump. Is that something that is included in this project or it's not included?
I would have to defer that question to our city engineer.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at all the different measures from an engineering standpoint. And if it's, that's why, that's why we wanted to bring this to you tonight. If that is uh, something that's a priority, like we've heard, we've heard it before. We've worked with the fire department. What's in your staff report now and what we're presenting to COG is uh, is not detailed engineered plans. We are trying to define these projects and the scope and and the the location of them and the the crosswalks we're trying to improve. We don't, we don't have to have everything designed by next Tuesday. So we're all, we're looking at any traffic calming device that meets. Either the community meets your direction and works with all the different staff. So we've talked about the dots and the bumps and the speed tables will work with the fire chief. If there is a two inch rubber mat or whatever the term is, we'll, we'll look at that. And and our engineers will provide our opinion from a traffic speed circulation, you know, our job, that's, we'll just provide our recommendation. Uh, and if that's the best option, then we'll definitely try and get it funded so that we can get it put in. Or we put it in and we take the funding that we get. Tonight, we're trying to present the projects. We need to get these applications in so we can get funding and we can. In the applications, we're also telling them if we get funded, we're ready to start right away. So we get it designed and get the construction done.
Could you put those, like you said, the dots on the other? Could you put those on all the projects and just see what they?
The dots that we talked about earlier, yes, certainly. That that doesn't add, I don't, I'll talk to the fire chief, but I don't believe that adds an issue for the fire department.
The mat, the rubber.
We'll, we'll look at, we'll look at all of those things. So tonight, we're not, we're not telling you this is the only thing we're doing. We just need to try and see what we can get funded and make sure we're prioritizing them according to you.
Just so everybody knows, we're, you know, some measure, this is a COG, Council of Governments. I'm our, um, council representative, Council of Governments. I was one of those that kind of worked on this from the very start. And I thought of that lady right there when, when that came up. And I think we all did. We all have a huge heart for Anita and her story. She's so selfless, coming out, pouring out her heart to us. And none of us want that to happen at any, any more of our Selma, um, treasure, treasure kids. None of us, we all want to make it better. So tonight, we're taking a little further step towards that. There's $6 million in funding total. Fresno and Clovis, um, deferred. They're not going to be trying to get funding for this. So we have a a lesser pool of cities that we have to compete against for this funding. So we got a really good chance to get some, getting something on this. And just going to come down to the scoring committee. You know, me as your COG representative, I'll be, I'll be voting for us. And I, I want every community to get traffic calming measures in this. This is just hugely important and I think it just bears remembering that we're not there yet. You know, I mean, we're, we're still have a problem with with vehicles going too fast, you know? And it's like, what is, what is it gonna take? This won't be perfect either, but it'll be a step forward. That's all we're trying to do is to uh, to make our kids safer. I think we're all trying to work together here and and thank you again for your, for your testimony tonight. So powerful.
We have a question.
Yeah, just got a question.
Just have a clarification. Um, just so we're clear, the tactical urbanism grant allows us to actually be more competitive and score better. When we do things that match the findings of the tactical urbanism projects. And when we show data that shows reduced speeds around the high school, getting funding for that project scores higher with the scoring committee. The other thing I'll say is, as the chief said, we, we don't want to have our first responders show up at any school. Trying to do certain improvements is great. Collectively, the more that we do, we collectively reduce speeds in the entire community. And so the more projects we can do collectively, the city becomes safer. And so I think doing a speed bump is great if it fits. However, collectively, staff believes a combination of a multi-pronged approach to reducing speeds. Reducing lane sizes, having bulb outs, having flashers. More notification to the public is not a bad thing. And so if the more projects we can do, we collectively make our communities safer. People are more aware of where the schools are and we bring speeds down over time. One speed bump on once, on one street is collectively probably as much as most of these projects are as a whole. And so doing that type of improvement, well and good, it slows speed down on one street for one stretch. The more notification you have, the more signage you have, the more visible crosswalks you have, the smaller lanes you have. All of these things, the more buttons we have collectively, the community becomes safer as a whole, which is the purpose of this program. Which is why we have four projects to reach every part of the community, not just one school, not just one street. We want to hit as many streets as possible so that we reduce speeds.
Got it. Well, taken and we also want to make sure we know where the accidents are happening right now. The severity, so you don't just take into account frequency, also severity. So your points well taken, Deputy C and Manager. I think we're all on the same, uh, the same page here. Do we have any more public comment? I, I think you've had your, your shot. You had your moment. Thank you. You'll have it for the next one. Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to um, move on from our um, special presentation to our consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar category are considered routine. A complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. Council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does council have any items they would like removed from the consent calendar tonight?
Uh, let me, uh, I'm gonna pull two, one and also two, two.
Okay. Anybody else? Is there a motion to approve item two, three?
I'll make a motion.
Picking.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Protim Guerra.
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, item two, one.
Two, one, okay. On this two, one, uh, re annexation, re, you know, pre zoning. The reason why I pulled it, I I know we have people in the audience on this issue. But on a development, on a rezoning, I mean, well, rezoning of this area. Is, the question is, when we bring in annexation, we should have a a plan for sewer and water. In the subdivisions that these houses that are going to be affected. Now, what is the time, the question is, what is the timeline? When we do annex these areas into the city? To facilitate some of these issues for our sewer and water, uh, for these residents that are part of our community now. That's the question I like to address. And in the issue, where? Because when they come into the city and they want. Amenities is like water and sewer and they don't have them yet, yet they have the septic tanks and the uh, pumps. What? What, I mean, I want to, I want to put, what timeline do the city have the responsibility? Put these in? That's the question I'm asking. When we do this annexations, the reason, into the city. I'm.
So, Councilmember Avalos, if I'm understanding the question, you're asking about the existing properties that are already developed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're talking about northwest corner of.
That's correct.
Dinuba. And I think there's a house further down Dinuba to the.
Yeah, further down, you're actually correct.
Okay, so uh, in terms of timeline, there is no timeline. If they want to remain on their septic tank and water, they can maintain that facility without being forced to go on to city facilities. Uh, staff has reached out to S K F and Cal Water to discuss those items on capacity in the existing McCall line. We believe that there's solutions for the existing McCall line for some capacity. However, the city has looked at installing the full Dinuba line as part of a ongoing capital improvement project that requires bonding and financing by the city.
Now, since I got there, you're on. Now, isn't our responsibility provide the water and the amenities for these residents or how's, where are we?
In in terms of now, when they're annexed to the city?
Yes.
If they desire them, there could be a cost associated like most developments that they would need to pay connection fees with S K F if they want sewer or water facilities. We don't force them off their existing facilities until there's a future development or new construction or there's a request.
Okay, point made. If they have development across the street, let's say across the street. So they're, now they're, now they're on a hook to hook up to the, the sewer. Okay. Now, now the, part two of the question is, what if the developer wanted annex into the property, into the city? All he's doing is increasing his value of his property. And sits on it, doesn't do anything.
I mean, I don't know if just annexation alone increases property value. The property would be designated in our general plan residential, so it would be still sold as residentially planned property. The only difference would be the jurisdiction that it's in. As far as, and it's in the sphere of influence, that doesn't change. And so land that's designated residential, commercial, what have you. Listed as commercially planned, commercially zoned, residentially zoned, subdivisible, what have you. That doesn't change the market value of the property.
Well, okay, on that note, let's, I'll give an example. Let's say I bought, I bought the property. And down the road, I sell the property to another individual. And another individual says, I'm going to turn it into a commercial, right, to a C three. Now, that changes the dynamics.
It, it does, but there's a process to go through to do that change. And none of those proposals are being proposed at that time, at this time. The existing general plan is what is shown and adopted by the existing general plan is what is being proposed by the applicant as part of their annexation proposal. There are no proposed up zones or anything like that as part of this increasing property value. All of the properties within the annexation boundary are shown as medium density residential, commercial office, what have you in the general plan. None of that is changing.
So, okay, on part, part three now. Now, if the individual i- is in the, let's say, in the annexation, let's say a three property, let's say. Four houses and one of those houses wanted to be turned on to a C three. Can it be possible down the road?
They, they're more than welcome to apply to have it changed down the road if they desire.
So they can remain like as a residential until they decide to change it over? Let me ask that question.
As long as it's in the general plan right now is residential, the pre zone would also be residential. And it would stay residential until there's a policy change, there's a general plan amendment and a rezone to change it to some other designation. As of right now, if they're designated residential, the corresponding pre zone is residential. If they're commercial, it's commercial. Commercial office, C one. You know, high density commercial would be C three. If they're medium density residential, they're R one, seven. It's all laid out in the consistency matrix of the general plan and in the proposal by the applicant.
So down the road, they actually can leave it residential, then down the road, flip, change it to probably a C three, a C one, whatever they wish.
They can propose the hat, they can submit an application similar to the applicants tonight for annexation. They're more than welcome to submit a proposal. Staff doesn't guarantee that ca- council, future councils will approve it. Anybody can submit on their own property, an application to change the designation on their property.
And that pertains on the other side too, as far as property on the north side. If they want to change it to the commercial development operation, it has to come to council or or planning. the, uh, commercial development operation, it has to come to council or, or planning.
Um, I mean, an applicant can propose it if they would like. If council wants staff to look at initiating a change, council can always give that direction if that's what they would like to do.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the information. Any questions from my colleagues up here?
Absolutely. So at, um, LAFCO, um, what are some of the questions going to be? You as the former chair of LAFCO, um, what would be some of the questions, from, from my limited experience? There, they want to make sure that city services are provided to make it actually part of the city. So is there, I don't recall, is there a timeline question on that, Deputy City Manager?
I mean, there's no timeline for any of the properties, um, currently to have services extended to them because there are no development proposals currently considered by this annexation. If there was a development proposal, like a subdivision included as part of the annexation, there would be a condition that they couldn't record a final map or do something along those lines until there were either improvement plans or the services were in place to connect to. And so as a part of any application, we consider what is proposed. This is simply just a proposal to annex the property without any development proposal. Um, services can be extended, you know, but we have to remember that it's Cal Water and S K F that the city coordinates with. So there's other agencies that require approval to do that, but there is no timeline to force people off of their existing facilities now. Um, a couple of questions that you do get at LAFCO, does this increase your property tax? No, it doesn't increase your property tax. It might change maybe the charges for services like trash. You wouldn't get charged for sewer because you're not getting sewer. But I believe in that area, I think Mid Valley's still the service provider, so there might be a different rate on your property tax. So it might be lower, might be slightly higher, um, in terms of what that cost is. But in terms of property tax, property tax doesn't change with annexation.
It seems like the driver for this is future development. This annexation, we've got Mr. Roberts here, who has testified eloquently previously on the plan for, is it nineteen units coming up? Twenty properties, so there is future development, there's another housing subdivision that's right there on Dinuba. So it seems to me that the growth, that city growth is actually fueling this, this, this expansion and this annexation. And we may have some people, I think we do tonight, who would like to talk about some potential issues from that annexation. If my council colleagues are done with their questions, we'll open it up to the public. Do you have any, do you have any issues tonight? Please step up. It's your name, sir.
This is going to be the third, uh, hearing in city. Uh, one in, uh, planning, one in, uh, previously. I was never ever informed. At, on Labor Day night, uh, uh, Labor Day night, I was informed by my neighbors uh, that my property is being discussed. On next day, I went, came to city and I raised three questions. Like if there is going to be any, uh, difference in cost of living after annexation. But I wasn't, uh, as it is discussed, it's not, n- no change. But we know there are certain bonds, uh, school bonds and other like issues too. Those are going to increase the cost of living in those areas. And with me, they are retired, they, they can't afford to pay extra. One question, uh, one reason is that, second reason, I heard from city, uh, last year in February that we are going to have Dinuba Avenue Zero Line very soon. And it will be like, uh, most probably, it will be starting by September twenty twenty four and will complete, uh, on, you know, like, uh, Godspeed. But nothing happened. And, uh, in the absence of infrastructure, there is no need for annexation. And also like we, uh, heard, the, the property values are not going to change. The properties we are going to annex, the proposed properties. Uh, I believe it's a one hundred fifty acres. So they are agriculture. After annexation, they are going to be agriculture or they are going to be residential. Obviously, the plans are like for residential, so there, there will be increase in the values. But, uh, the existing residents will be suffering. So I have one question, uh, the, uh, applicants, primary applicants who applied for annexation. Do they really live on those proposed properties, anyone? Any applicant does live on that, the proposed property to be annexed? No. We have been living there forever, so we really, re- uh, we are in sport of, uh, development. But we don't, uh, want like the burden of, uh, annexation and, um, should be on us, you know?
Thank you for your comments.
And a- another thing, uh, just I want one, um, uh, uh, like, uh, minute. We agreed for like, uh, development because there is a uh, continuously, uh, street hawkers making fires and other stuff and dangerous, uh, traffic zones. We wanted that to must be stopped. I did send a video for that. And we discussed about that, like after annexation, it will be done. But I have, last, uh, September second.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else with a comment?
It's I'm Gladys Griffith, ninety-eight eighty-five East Dinuba Avenue. And I sincerely hope that you've had two weeks to think about this annexation and, and reconsider your vote to move ahead. I think it's, uh, moving too fast. I think, you know, if you're go- I sat down and did some figuring, there's going to be a minimum of four hundred houses and up to a thousand houses in just that area. And that's, you know, every residence has a couple of cars, that's gonna be co- fifteen hundred more cars through Dinuba Avenue and McCall Avenue because there aren't other streets. Uh, it just doesn't make sense to rush into this. Take it in smaller units, not a hundred and fifty acres at one whack. And as Mr. Singh mentioned, it's a corporation that is not an agricultural corporation. It's a real estate farm in organization that has that property across the street from me. The people who are proposing this annexation do not live in the area, they're not going to be affected by the mess they're going to be creating. And it's just kind of rushing too fast. Why not slow it down? And I also disagree with the annexation proposed zoning. Um, Mr. Raven has a development down Dinuba Avenue. Very nice houses, very nice development. And hmm, the proposed zoning around his area is all single family. But come down to our end of the street and it's high density, mid-density. And why should my property have to be rezoned to have three property, three houses on my property? Because somebody else wants to annex to higher density? I mean, somewhere I read that, uh, one area that you propose is to keep open spaces. And yet those of us who enjoy the open spaces of an acreage that was zoned R one estate now has to be rezoned to take away that space that we've enjoyed for fifty years? How is that fair to us? Just things for you to consider.
Thank you for your comments.
Pollution. And another thing I was thinking about, the people who live north of Dinuba are all gonna have to be crossing Dinuba to get to the schools. And this has been the big topic for tonight. How are you gonna protect all of those Dinuba for, um, busy, busy street? How are you gonna protect those kids? I see them crossing right now, that, across their right street to get down to school, and it's gonna be in pre- increased. So I think you're hurrying into it. I think you should delay it, look at it, annex it in smaller sections one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Teresa Salas, um, I agree with the other, um, speakers. We have been waiting for years and years and years for that signal on McCall and Dinuba. And we're nowhere closer to that. There's, there's, whatever reasons, we can't get a signal there. On any given day during after-school stuff, that line, traffic line goes all the way down to almost Dockery and all the way down to practically Thompson. People waiting at five o'clock, they're practically down Manning Avenue coming that way. You can't get through there at all. There's no sewer down Dinuba Avenue at all yet. Not even, I mean, they're proposing it, they, they're giving us how much it might cost, and it's gonna be less than what they thought it was gonna be, but that we still don't have a timeline. We don't have anywhere near a signal or sewer for that area. So why are we annexing all this and putting this burden on these people who are actually living there who are going to be affected by this now? Somebody said that they wanted to be a whole big old thing of duplexes across the street. But nobody's done anything but say, oh, this is what we want to do. But these people who are here speaking today, they live there. They've lived on their property for a long time. And you're telling somebody, yeah, you bought a house, there was a for sale sign there, you bought your house, and you're living there with your family, with your parents, your children, and now you're, you're telling me that you're gonna change my zoning and that if my house burns down, I'm out of luck. I can't put another house there. Somebody crashes into it from that busy corner and makes my house ir- unlivable. I can't put my house back there, even though I bought it with the intention of being my family home. There's all these things to consider for the people that are living there now. Not some big corporation from out of town who wants to make a lot of money by building lots of houses. Let's not do the annexation yet until the rest of these things are taken care of, till there's a sewer. Then, then those people want to build houses, great. There's, the sewer's gonna be there, your signal's gonna be there, a wider street's gonna be there. We're, you're forcing something on people who are not gonna benefit from this at all. The people that are gonna benefit from it are the big developers. And, and even they aren't gonna do, aren't gonna benefit because there's no sewer, there's no signal, there's nothing there for them yet. So I, I would agree with the people that have spoken already to have the council wait on that annexation.
My mic's not on.
Okay, this is all news, new to me, so I'm trying to take it in because I live on McCall Village where Teresa does. And, uh, this will affect me because that corner is United Market, Burger Time. Um, the business is in that little mall. It's gonna be very busy and I didn't hear anything about, uh, helping with the traffic control and having to do that whole intersection over again to, to, you know, instead of stop signs, it's gonna have to be all redone. That's just, that's just, uh, something I didn't hear about. That's a lot of money too, so. So yeah, that I can see where the flow of traffic is gonna have to be studied.
Mayor, City Council. My name is Allison Ying Bauer, and my property is located at ninety-seven ninety-one South McCall Avenue, A P N dash three five eight dash one twenty dash thirty-five. My family has owned this property for sixty years. I grew up on that property. My sister still lives at that property and the house on that, on that land. Um, as I indicated at the last city council meeting, I wrote a letter to the city council and the city planning commission, and it was included in your packet. The letter is formally requesting the annexation of my property in addition to the Selma North Annexation and Pre-Zone Property Proposal, I'm sorry. As shown by the map in Exhibit B of your Attachment two point one, our twenty-acre property is highlighted in yellow and is surrounded on three sides with the Selma North Annexation Proposal and existing city limits. I respectfully urge the Selma City Council to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, Selma North Annexation Pre-Zoning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Roberts. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicants for the proposed pre-zoning and annexation request. I'm here, for the record, I'd like to state that we're in concurrence with the past action of the council last month when you did approve the pre-zoning for the annexations and with the action here tonight that's suggested by staff. Um, I'd just like to add a couple comments, and I've obviously listened to the comments of the audience here this evening. The, the land use designations that are in your general plan were determined by this council and by staff uh, years or decades ago. They, when you have a sphere of influence determined by the city and by LAFCO, you have to plan for what's going to be there in the future, and you did that, uh, years ago. The pre-zonings that are proposed are all consistent with those designations that are already in place. There are no plan amendments proposed today. There are no rezonings proposed, just pre-zoning consistent with, with what's already there. I do know when, uh, LAFCO and the city and the county all meet, they determine what are called logical boundaries for annexation. You can't create awkward peninsulas, awkward islands, or that sort of thing. So it, they determine actually what's the best boundary to fall, or to follow, and then proceed accordingly. So the, the actual decision about the line or the boundary is determined by a combination of things. Your city's involved, LAFCO's involved, and the county of Fresno's involved, and then that was done some time ago for this project. I filed an application that includes several properties. The pre-zonings for those properties are consistent with your land use designations. They're consistent with the action that you took, uh, several weeks ago and with the sequoia document that you've approved. Um, when this process does get to LAFCO, they'll rely upon your past work, they'll rely upon the sphere of influence, the general plan designation and the pre-zonings that have been done. And, um, there really isn't a lot of flexibility. All LAFCO's in the state of California fo- follow what's called the, um, Knox-Hertzberg Act, Cortezy-Knox-Hertzberg Act. And they really don't have a whole lot of flexibility there. So you're following the, the rules established by the state. You're following the, the LAFCO policies, and I'd just like to state again for the record that I think it's better if you do approve this area, you will then have total control of the intersection of Dinuba and McCall. It makes infrastructure a whole lot easier to get installed, which will be paid for by development. But it makes it easier if you only have one entity to deal with and not two. So, thank you. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Anybody else with a comment? Anybody online or on the phone with a comment about this item?
Fair, I see no hands raised at this time.
Hey, we'll bring the matter back to council. Does council have any comments at this time?
Yeah, I have a comment. I just want to mention or ask about the signal light. Cause we mentioned, that comes up all the time. And we always say, okay, it's gonna be next quarter, we have some information coming. Do we know when that st- that single, signal light is going in?
I can provide an update. So the, the funding for that signal is through, uh, C Mac, which is a federal-funded project, which was approved, um, I believe, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. The process, uh, you have to follow, uh, the federal-funded process, which is over by Caltrans. So currently, the status update for the council is that the, uh, an R F P was
So currently the status update for the council is that the, an RFP was, was sent out for right-of-way consultants. Now, the Caltrans requires any right-of-way that is obtained has to be certified and follow a certain process. So that consultant has, the RFP went out, we got, I believe, three applicants. It is with the city staff that are reviewing each of those proposals. We're scoring those proposals, we're going through the process, that's very strict for Caltrans process. So that's the next funded portion of the CMAC property. There's engineering, there's right-of-way and then there's construction. So right now we're in the right-of-way phase. The timing that we've told those consultants is that they need to get their right-of-way acquisition done and certified by the spring or early summer. So that then we can request the funding portion of the construction phase for CMAC. And then we'll move into bidding the project out and being able to actually go into construction. So the question about what, what day are we going to start? We're in the middle of the right-of-way phase, it's going to depend upon, right, so we have to follow that process of the properties have to be contacted, the right-of-way consultant will be working with them on acquiring that right-of-way. That process will depend upon each property owner and how they respond. If it all goes well, then that's the timeline that we've laid out. Once that right-of-way can be certified, then we can move into the construction and request the funding for the construction. So our, our goal is that we, during the winter and early spring, that right-of-way can be obtained and certified so that then we can finish the plans, put it out for construction. And we have to submit a request for funding from Caltrans in order for the construction portion and that takes, takes time with Caltrans. They won't tell us, they can't commit to a timeline, could take weeks, could take a couple months. Our part to try and stay on, stay on task and request it as quick as possible.
And to add to what David, you know, just provided, that right-of-way acquisition as he stated, we have to negotiate with multiple property owners who could say no. And then we would have to come back before the city council and do eminent domain, right? And so it's not necessarily a straightforward process because there are other variables that we have no control over. Similar to funding through Caltrans, similar to dealing with property owners. Now, the annexation at least removes the need to negotiate with the county and get approval from the county board of supervisors to assume control of the right-of-way so that we can do the construction, which we had to do for the Amberwood Sewer Line Project to facilitate that. So it can be done, but there's still timing and other variables that we still have no control over. And so as with any project, we keep pushing forward and we keep doing what we're supposed to be doing to get the job done.
So is it safe to say sometime in twenty-six or twenty-seven?
We're aiming for twenty-six, I wouldn't say safe, but I'm, we're aiming to do it as quickly as possible and the current timeline is mid-two thousand twenty-six.
Six, okay.
So, so we're hearing, so we're hearing, we're hearing tonight, we've been dealing with this stoplight, that's going to happen whether or not this annexation goes through, that stoplight's coming in. It's not going anywhere, there's nine-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand in the spreadsheet per CMAC, federal funded, they're not going to claw it back, it's not political. We're just moving forward on that. I mean, how many Caltrans directors have we asked? John Liu, Diana Gomez, Mike Navarro, and they all say the same thing, oh God, sorry it takes so long, but you know, we gotta go through all these federal channels. We're frustrated too, we want that stoplight, it's going to help traffic there. The next item is the roads, Dinuba. You know, to get, to get those roads widened though, you gotta pay for it. City isn't going to go up and put in a whole bunch of money to widen those roads on Dinuba, there's just no, there are no funds for it. So you gotta have that development, have the developers pay the funds and one of the ways to do that is annex that land. There are some issues there that we're hearing tonight, good, good people who are affected by it. And I hear everything you say and I, I mean, these are the cream of the crop right there, Selma's finest. And, and you're being affected by it and adversely and we want to mitigate that as much as possible. We gotta grow though, Selma's got to grow and that is in our general plan of where to grow. And I've always wondered, why in the heck weren't those properties part of Selma? I always thought they were before I got on city council, it just seems logical. And that's when the boundaries were made, it was logical for people back then when our general plan in two thousand and ten came out to grow in that direction and that's what the city is doing now, we're in a growth mode. So that's where we're headed, there should be more positive byproducts than negative byproducts from this. And that's wider roads, that stoplight's going to come in. But one of the things I'm hearing tonight that I think we can help with on the council is expedite the darn sewer line, let's move forward on that. We got the credit line for it, let's get that sewer line and get Dinuba in, in action, in process. That's going to help widen those roads, we'll get subdivisions there, get housing there. So I mean, that's, what I'd like to add tonight is I'd love to see that, us tap that line of credit and start that sewer line process in the next year or two. I really would, let's do this, let's get this going. Not this five minutes, there's no, there's no, but what we're saying is we're starting the ball rolling right now. We're starting the ball rolling on getting that sewer line installed. Deputy City Manager, what is a realistic timeline to start the process of getting that, of tapping that line of credit? Getting, you know, bidding it out and getting that sewer line installed for Dinuba?
What's the date?
This, the city engineer in terms of the final design plans, SKF is reviewing those plans, correct?
Yeah, SKF has reviewed them, Fresno County's reviewed them, CID's reviewed them, the plans are basically ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent done. We are wanting to make sure we look at the railroad and the fiber optic lines. If we need to potpour those and verify those issues, then we should do that first before we start construction. So as far as the plans go, once those checks are done, then it's on the shelf, ready to go as soon as you finance it.
And, and so ninety-five percent plans, we get verification of some of the items that we ran into on the other project to try and verify that we don't have hiccups on those, to meet our timelines for connection. We would then go out for bid to get a number to identify what that cost on the line of credit would be. And so, once we finish the plans, put it out to bid, we would have the number, we would need to reach out to the bank and get the line of credit as part of that. Because again, we don't want to award the contract if we don't have the approval, right? And so we would just need to do those, you know, either concurrently or one right after the other.
So correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the twenty unit subdivision comes into play, another subdivision comes into play on Dinuba, that would mean Cal Water and SKF would have to hook up the sewer there and it would be much more likely that they would hook up the sewer lines and the water lines of these folks who happen to be on the other side of Dinuba, is that correct?
I mean, they might.
Could that be a condition of the city for them?
Typically what we.
Providing this service.
Typically what we do with projects is we have them, you know, place a lateral or a service where their, where existing development is. So that in the future they can hook up and we don't have to tear up the road that was just installed, right? And so we can condition it, we can work through the plans as part of construction, whether it's us doing the construction and we put that as part of the project, talk to Cal Water and make sure those are on the improvement plans as part of future development. That is a very typical thing to do to ensure that we don't, you know, have to redo construction that was just put in, which the Public Works Director and the City Engineer will tell you, you know, limits the life of that facility. It'll start to degrade quicker the more you cut into it. We actually had to assume control of part of the Golden State Boulevard project because of the, of the sewer line project and it was just paved. They usually have a ten-year, twenty-year moratorium to cutting into a road that's just paved in Fresno County. So as part of our agreement to install the sewer, we also assumed some of the maintenance that comes along with the road, so.
And it seems fair play too?
Yeah.
That these folks who have these other services would have the option to hook into those services?
Correct.
And pay for them, but have them hooked into for free as part of their citizenship status of Selma, California after this annexation, so to speak.
The council can condition projects appropriately to include those type of conditions. Developers to help the neighborhoods that are impacted, sometimes there's a sequel impact where you can make a direct correlation to that as an exaction of the project. And so that does, that has happened on other projects. You know, I think it, it's fair to offer that, but at the same time, it is, it comes at a cost.
Questions? Motion?
Yeah, no, I thank you for the information about sequel, thank you.
Are you making a motion, Councilman?
Yeah, you know what, the future development, I, I, I feel for these people, but at the same time, when they first moved there, there were no houses around them and now there's houses around them. And, and I, and I, I understand they want their privacy and everything, but in life, it's got to grow. I know that for a fact, you know, so I'm going to make the motion to annex this thing and open this development and get the sewer line up and running for these people and for the future and get, get this project of the, the stabilizationist light on track and get it done in, some guy made a statement, twenty-two, twenty-six. Going to hold them to it.
Got it, is there a second? Okay, call the roll please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. Item two-two, check register, Councilman Avalos.
Okay, check. Oh, I'm not going to be here all night, uh, uh, okay.
No kidding.
No, 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 here, I was, well, I can't read this number here, it's the, it's six-seven-nine-seven-four. Or eight, I'm sorry, it's eight-seven-nine-four, it's eight-seven-nine-seven-four, if I can make it out. It's for Rem and Associate Company, High Street Remedy, four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Kind of give me a kind of a clarification, what took place, kind of give me a insight.
Those were, that's a cost for some of the renderings that were prepared for High Street for the downtown trees and lights that were presented to council.
That with that, I'm, that, well, it seems kind of high, that's what I meant. I'm, okay, okay. And this, this is another item, eight-seven-nine-four-four-zero. This, this goes to the fire department. It's, it's about hoses and nine thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. But at the same line, I noticed that you have, this, from the same, same deal on eight-seven-nine-two-nine, same date, for same thing, lettering jackets were for one thousand and one twenty-six sixty, well, kind of give me a, what happened there? Is that two items?
Yeah, the first check in question, eight-seven-nine-four-zero to MES, that was for the purchase of nozzles for our two-and-a-half-inch hose lines.
Was that the same equipment, the same, I'm just kind of giving a clarification here, Chief.
Sure, so the, the nozzles in question were to replace the two-and-a-half-inch hose line nozzles for our three fire engines and ladder trucks, so the total of.
Was it two different engines or just the one?
No, no, four, four total, yes.
Okay, four total, okay.
And then the, the second check in question was from a different supplier, Ellen Curtis and Sons. And that was for nozzles and lettering on jackets, so the, the turnouts, the, the, the structured gear that we wear, the coats, they, they have our firefighter's last names on there. And then the, the nozzles themselves, that was for a, a complement of inch-and-a-half hose line nozzles. And I believe that was for, I want to say, two, two apparatus and the breakdown of the cost between the, the lettering for the jackets, I don't have that exact figure in front of me, to separate the dollar amounts for the nozzles versus the lettering.
Okay, 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 thank you. And one more question. The eight-seven-nine-one-six, the construction of the new fire station, you know, one, you know, we have a grant, what was it, I see a G, grant for thirteen thou, you know, thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars fifty-five cents, where, where, where are we? That the design or what is that, a grant, it says grant, G, I understand it's a grant.
Sure, so that's a progress payment with Griffin Structures, who's the company that is working on the design build for the fire station campus. That project has since been placed on hold from a previous council meeting and so.
Okay. On that note, what is, what is a timeline to use that grant, is there a timeline on it or no timeline?
There is no timeline on that.
So it's locked in, in place?
Yes, sir.
Or less, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else with a, the check? Anybody from the public with a check on the check register tonight or the Cal card? Anybody online or on the phone with a question about the check register?
Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
Is there a motion to approve item two-two?
I make a motion?
For a second?
A second.
Call the roll please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, moving on to item three, departmental reports, city attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy City Manager, anything to report tonight?
Staff was able to attend the Cal APA conference in Monterey and touch base with a lot of local agencies. And you'll be happy to know, we're farther ahead than a lot of cities in California. There was a session that was, they were discussing development review process at their city, city San Leandro. And about ninety thousand plus people in the Bay Area right next to Oakland, you know, four hundred thousand person city, still doing permits by hand. We don't do that. As we reviewed our process and we made those advancements. Sitting in a lot of sessions, you hear a lot of same issues, different issues, but similar, right? But the thing I will say is our staff is constantly trying to get better and it really feels nice when you go to a conference and you hear that you are ahead of a lot of agencies in doing what we do. So again, I want to commend staff for their efforts, especially with the development review process, with a lot of the processes that we've implemented to help the citizens of Selma.
Talking about conferences, through other people from other cities, we've been finding out that we're not getting information on different conferences like legal cities and all that. Previous city clerk used to give us all that information. We've been missing a lot of stuff, they're, they're going to Long Beach for the legalized cities and, you know, other people asking, so I don't know. So we want to know what's happening with that because we've been excluded from a lot of stuff.
I will most definitely forward that to you from now on.
Yeah, yeah, because it's embarrassing when you, when you go meet people and they're like, hey, aren't you going to Long Beach? And I'm like.
I was not aware that you're not part of their list.
Well.
A distribution list and I was not aware that you're not part of that, but now that it's been brought to my attention, I will rectify the situation.
The state of the county luncheon, they asked me about that too and I'm like, I don't know. So we're missing out on a lot of stuff that we should be given the opportunity to attend, at least to represent our city. I mean, I don't know, maybe we can do better, I'm not sure, but thank you.
Back to Deputy City Manager, his report, congratulations on that, that's very good that we are right up there with these larger cities in terms of automating processes. I think that speaks really well because we don't have a lot of people in these departments and we're doing a lot with, with what we have. So congratulations to all the employees, thank you for all your, your hard work. One, one issue I did have from a, someone in the public is they came in and tried to get a permit printed off and we didn't, we don't do that unless it's a yard sale permit. Can we provide the service to folks who maybe don't, are not that adept with their cell phones and printing things out and computers and all that stuff? I mean, I think we need to be there and we are, we're showing that as the Deputy City Manager said. But I think we also need to retain that old school rail. But I think we also need to retain that old school rail where we can accommodate folks who aren't as computer savvy. Can we make it a point that we, we do print out permits when people come in and ask for them?
Personal touch.
Yeah, the personal touch.
Uh, we do at a cost, like most things, I think there's a cost per page. Mon- slight cost, but we can do that. There shouldn't be any reason.
I, I will clarify that with the gentleman that, that, that told me that there were, they were refused service on that, whether they were refused or whether there was a cost associated with it. But that's good to know and let's keep it nominal, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we don't, I mean, we don't charge for profit or anything. We charge at cost because that's who we are. Um, but you can give the gentleman my cellphone and I'll meet him at the counter and I'll talk to him myself.
Will do, thank you. And then on the events, yeah, if we could just get as a council, like, a calendar every, every month, that'd be great, of upcoming events, conferences, so we can plan our schedule as well around that, so that we all get informed.
Most definitely, and I have forwarded a few items for like the five cities. When I'm advised by them that it is my job to invite you, then I do forward that invite.
Okay, err on the side of just inviting us, you know, if you get something, thank you.
I will.
Alright, City Clerk, do you have a report tonight?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Community Services Director.
My favorite.
Up on the line here.
You, you know what that means? You're on the radar. Right, that's a good thing. Can we get new microphones or batteries or something? Jeez.
Having technical difficulties, but we just figured it out. Okay, so good evening, everybody. Um, so I just did wanna touch on a few things that, um, our department has been working on the last few weeks. We, we have entered our busy season and so our staff is really feeling the busy season. Um, and so I just wanted to give kudos to everybody that assisted with the Selma Live event. It was a very successful event over at Lincoln Park. Um, I did do some research on Place RAI and it looks like we, we, um, attracted about twenty-five hundred attendees. And so, um, I was fascinated by the data that I was able to pull and we pulled, um, residents from Selma, Parlier, Fowler, Fresno, Dinuba, all our, you know, local areas around here, but the ones that, you know, jumped out at me were a family about, of about eight participants that were here from Indiana. So, no idea where they came from or who they were, unfortunately, but I thought that was a really neat fact. Um, but kudos to all the staff and all the volunteers that worked so tirelessly to make that a good event. Staff, um, received a lot of good feedback from the community and so, um, it was definitely well-received. Um, the other event that we did host this last weekend was our Pumpkin Palooza, again, another successful event. According to Place RAI, we did, um, attract about fifteen hundred attendees to our event and so it was a good, um, fall festival for us over at Pioneer Village. Families were able to take home a free pumpkin. And then the kids were able to participate in all the free activities. The only thing that I kept telling people that wasn't free was the food. Unfortunately, you do have to pay for your own food, but the face painters, the craft section, the, um, inflatables, um, everything that we had out there was free, with the exception of food. And so, um, I did wanna thank our Spark staff, our Public Works Department, Home Depot, Mid Valley Disposal, Crown Services, and the twenty-five volunteers, student volunteers that we received to come out and, um, spend that afternoon with us, um, without our volunteers, our events would not be successful. We're a small little group, so all the help we can get is always greatly appreciated. And then the last thing that I wanted to touch base on was, um, the Selma Arts Center, um, crafted you guys little goodie bags with some of their, um, new items, and so please enjoy. And I did want to speak a little bit on the show that is currently playing at the Selma Arts Center. It is called Mohada, which is a Greek tragedy in the streets of modern-day Los Angeles. And it is in the center of Medea, a seamstress of extraordinary talent who has sacrificed everything to cross the border with her partner, their son, and their caretaker. Um, this is a powerful story of survival, betrayal, and the cost of assimilation, and a call for actors ready to embody passion, humor, heartbreak, and fury. And so, this show does run until October eighteenth. Tickets are available. Um, they're doing a big push out to the community to hopefully get some more, um, attention to this just very powerful show that we highly recommend you guys all come out and see. So, that's all.
And if I may add to that, um, the event for, um, Pepe Marquez uh, just blew everybody's mind because we didn't really expect that, the kind of response, um. Um, just so, so people know, um, everything that was paid for, for that event was not city money. That was through sponsors who graciously gave us, um, enough money to pay for that. So, um, we're gonna grow. Next year, we're planning something even bigger. But I just wanted to mention that, um, the people that, that did all the work, Rosie, my wife, Belinda, Frank Martinez, Director Fletcher, her staff, Jose Moreno for all the wonderful, um, videos and everything else. And Public Works for, you know, being out there and being supportive and, you know, helping us out. And, uh, you know, it went, it went without it, and, uh, Police Chief, thank you for those two officers that, that made a big difference because that many people, they kept kinda, you know, they stayed in line because they were around, so. Yeah.
Fire was there too.
Fire was there too, and I shook their hand. But yeah, kudos to everybody that put it together, so like I said, next year, we're looking to hopefully bring a big Tejano superstar. So I think we're gonna move it over to, um, Pioneer, 'cause we expect more than twenty-five hundred people. So. Thank you, guys, and, um, job well done.
Finance Director Moreno?
Nothing to report.
Yeah, you are.
Our Chief Webster?
Alright, just a couple of items, uh, this evening. Um, to begin, on September twentieth, um, members of our Fire Department, um, our Honor Guard and our, uh, Fire Marshal, uh, they flew out to Colorado Springs, Colorado, uh, to honor Chris Nelson, the firefighter that, that passed away from his injuries, um, a couple of February's ago. Uh, his name was placed on the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial. And so, um, last year, our, uh, Firefighters Association did a, uh, golf tournament fundraiser and raised funds to be able to fly Cl- uh, Chris's wife and his two children and his mother out to Colorado so they could be present, uh, for the ceremonies. And then, uh, this last Saturday, um, October fourth, uh, Chris's name was placed on the California Firefighters Memorial up in Sacramento. And so, um, I was able to join, um, our Fire Marshal and members of our Honor Guard, um, as well as Chris's wife and, and children and mother, uh, to be part of that ceremony. And, um, I'd like to recognize, uh, Fire Captain, Labor President Joey Frankmore, uh, Fire Captain Jesse Gomez, Fire Marshal Anthony Rivas, uh, Engineers Gerald Reiser and Jordan Pizer, uh, for representing Chris and his family. Um, you know, taking time out of their days to go out to Colorado, to go up to Sacramento, uh, for representing our Honor Guard and our Fire Department and, and, uh, just being part of such an important ceremony and, and commemorating all those who lost their life, um, serving their communities as firefighters. Uh, being part of that is, is really, um, is truly a display of humanity and, and just a image of professionalism to be part of that group and be part of that important ceremony for all those different family members. So I just wanna thank them for their hard work and, and, and representing, you know, this city and, and, and our department. Um, the next thing, we had a new higher academy that, that occurred over the last couple of weeks. Um, we had, uh, two firefighters successfully complete that process and they are now, um, on shift and assigned to their, uh, prospective stations. Um, during that process, Fire Captain Joey Frankmore and Jesse Gomez, uh, they were the, the two captains that led the training cadre, did an exceptional job with the staff and, and really prepared them for the, the rigors of, uh, serving this community. And so I wanted to, to mention them for that. Um, we received all of our Life Pack thirty-fives that council approved recently, and so they're all sitting in boxes across the street. We're waiting for, uh, uh, Stryker to come and do the in-service training for all of our crews so we can get those out on our units to, to help us, um, serve the community. Ambulance five-five-six is finally in service. We've been, uh, hearing, uh, next Friday, I think, for the last six or seven months. And so that thing's finally out on the streets and we're happy to have that, uh, join our fleet. Um, an update on the EMS facility, uh, we've been working, myself, Director Hawn, uh, Cindy, City Engineer, David Horn, uh, we've been working with Mobile Modular as well as, uh, David Horn's staff on the site plan as well as the, uh, the facility plan itself. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Mobile Modular to make sure all of the things are tied together appropriately. And so we're getting, um, we're moving, I would say, fairly quickly on, on getting that project up and going. I know council had set a, uh, a goal of ninety days to get that thing out to bid, and we're actively pursuing that. And so, uh, we've made really great progress. Um, and I think we're finally at the stage where we've got a project that we're gonna see to the finish line. And so we're very excited to, to see that, and I just wanna thank those two for their support and knowledge in that process. And then lastly, um, we've rolled out the FireMed program, um, uh, online, and that was with the support of Deputy City Manager Keen and my Admin Assistant Samantha. Um, they were able to create an application process through OpenGov, which is the same program we use for permitting. And, uh, that's been a, a good success. And then we had the support of Director Fletcher and allowing us to go and meet with the senior citizens as, and then we've also, um, worked with, uh, the folks out at one of our mobile home parks to be able to get that information out. And the last part is, and I don't know if you've seen it on our social media, um, but Director Moreno has, uh, has been a huge asset to us in making just professional imaging and the video that's gone out to, uh, promote that. Uh, it's such an important, um, uh, thing for our community, especially those that are on fixed incomes and that, that have to worry about the cost of ambulance service and spending that seventy-five dollars a year to be able to take away any co-pays or co-insurance or deductibles. Um, you know, it, it takes that out of the equation when determining whether or not they wanna call nine-one-one. And so, you know, I just encourage the community to, um, you know, to call us, the Fire Department, and ask questions and, and, uh, or visit the website and, and find the information on our website. Uh, but it's really just a benefit to all the families in our community, as well as the communities of Kingsburg, uh, and Dinuba as well. So thank you guys for your support on that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I say, uh, be, I know you guys are gonna be leaving after this, so I'd like to, I'd like to, um, so, uh, my wife, our family, uh, a couple of weeks ago had a, had an injury at the McCall Village. And, um, one of, uh, my wife's uncle, Don Bloodworth, fell and you, you guys, the Fire Department got there, they're really good, and she said, hey, make sure you give a shout out and let them know. And so just we, I really want you to know that your department, they got there, they were really, they were really quick and fast and appreciate that. But a week later, on the other side of town, my wife tends for an individual, uh, best friend of my father-in-law. She takes care of him, and he called her in the middle of the night, said, I think I'm gonna die. So she called Fire Department, they showed, he, she showed up, they showed up, picked him up, took him, right? Next day, they got him back home and, uh, looks at her and tells her, man, the Fire Department did a great job. You guys gotta tell them, you know? Call John and tell him, right? So I just wanted you to, that you know that, you know what? I experienced about three weeks of some serious, serious, um, important, um, calls, and you guys did a fantastic job. And I want you to pass that to your department because, uh, these individuals, these seniors really need it. These were two separate mobile home pla- parks, and you guys attended them really fast. And I just want you to know, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Okay. EIL? Communications Officer.
Mayor, members of the council, what else can be said about Selma Live? Uh, it just goes to show when you get the citizens to get, citizens together and city staff, nothing could be, anything can be done, and sponsors. Um, I actually took some time this week to, uh, hand-deliver sponsor, uh, thank you letters to the sponsors, uh, with the idea from Mayor Robertson to show how grateful we are to have their support. And they were happy to, to have that one-on-one engagement and talk about sponsoring more city events. So, uh, it wa- it was a great event. Thank you all for, for being a part of it. Um, the other thing was the Pumpkin Palooza event on Saturday. Uh, we hit a milestone in collaboration with the Sparks team. Uh, the Pumpkin Paloo- the Pumpkin Palooza video reached over sixty-two thousand people on Facebook. That's the highest view count on Facebook this year. Uh, it just goes to show people love to see other families having fun, learning about the event. And I think that's, that kinda helped increase the attendance this year, 'cause they knew what to expect. They knew they were gonna get a free pumpkin, and there's plenty of things for kids to do, and that's exactly what our community is looking for, it sounds like. Um, the next thing is, um, like Chief said, the FireMed rollout. FireMed rollout's now active. Samantha Salsita, Senior Admin Assistant and EMS staff presented at McCall Village this week. And they actually helped the residents sign up in person. We showed them how to use the QR code, we showed them how to use their phone, and we got several sign-ups that way, and some actually came into the office this week, and Samantha walked them through the process. So, we're getting it together, we just gotta show, show, show them how to, uh, use the technology and, and get signed up. So it's been a good rollout. Uh, the video is actually live on our website right now, on social media and YouTube. It explains the benefits of membership and how it can help our residents during the emergencies that they may experience. Um, the next thing is the city event calendar. You can go to cityofselma.com and you click down at the Events tab. Everything that's happening in our city is on that calendar now for October. Um, it includes the city-hosted events, the legacy events, and also activities from some of our partners, including, uh, Mid Valley Disposal. So, uh, that's an updated calendar that I'm trying to keep up and, um, add information there. Last thing is, um, we recently lost a great member of our community, Dennis Luhon. Um, tomorrow, the council will be presenting a proclamation in his honor at his memorial service. You guys could take a look at the proclamation down here, um, when, when we break. Um, it's, I'm gonna ask that you guys sign it and we could present it at the memorial tomorrow, I believe during the mass portion, at, from eleven to twelve o'clock, right?
Right.
Yep, and I met with the chamber in regards to a collaboration here. Um, they partnered with Thomas Markhome, and they're creating a memorial book for, for, um, Mr. Luhon. So, community members can scan the QR code, which is sitting back here, and they can leave a memory on their, um, on Thomas Markhome's, uh, page. So the chamber is gonna take all the memories and the photos, and they're gonna print it out and make a book, and they're gonna hand it to the family down the road. So, if you can't make it, you can see the QR codes here, but there'll also be a poster at the event as well to leave a memory of, uh, of Dennis Luhon, who was actually my childhood barber when I was a little kid. I got a picture of getting my haircut when I was like two years old there. So, um, he will be greatly missed by the community, uh, Mr. Selma, Mr. Personality. Um, we're definitely gonna miss him, but I'm, I anticipate tomorrow's memorial being, being a great event. And that's all I have.
Um, also wanna say thank you to our Public Information Officer for doing a great job as the emcee at Selma Live. That's not easy. People wanna, you know, see the, see the concert, he kept it rolling. He let everybody know where the restrooms were. He just, he was informational as well as entertaining, so thank you for that. Also, when we had our, um, City Manager finalist here in the, in the city, city hall chambers, you had the QR code, you made it accessible. There were people there that night that weren't necessarily all that familiar with that. So thank you for doing that so that people could make their voice heard in that process. And I think that's what this, this is all about, making our website more accessible, making our events more accessible and enjoyable. Thanks to City Clerk for researching the history on Mr. Luhon. He was all about people and history and heritage of Selma. And, uh, he really embodied that, um, that, that Selma pride and that, that, that local heritage. So, um, you know, it's, uh, I appreciate you putting that proclamation together at the break. In a few minutes, we'll come down and, and, uh, and sign that. Um, so now we're gonna move on to our Police Chief.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public Works Director.
Oh, wait a minute.
Nothing to report. No.
Oh, no.
Chief, I have a question for the chief.
It's not April one.
I come with humor. Uh, first I,
Can you wait just a sec?
I, I thank you, uh, I, I noticed your guys did some training on the tactical rifles. And, uh, you did send one of the women for leadership for, uh, law enforcement, and I thank you, I did pay attention to let you know. And also, uh, on the note, where are we at on the cameras? Are the, are they coming on the flock?
Yo, yeah, yeah, we're, we're in the permitting process. Um, bonds have been issued, or submitted, rather, and, uh, which is, it's a matter of getting them, uh, put installed, I, I, I believe, so. We're, we're very close, very close. And with regards to, uh, Officer Greer, uh, succession planning and, and, uh, leadership development is a huge part of what we're doing at the Selma Police Department, so that we prepare for the future of Selma with regards to law enforcement. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Public Works Director.
So I wanna start by saying I greatly appreciate, um, not only staff members, members of the community and council members, that while I was going through my, uh, medical issues, that, that people were reaching out, sending prayers and, and thoughts, and I, I just wanna say I greatly appreciate that. Um, I have quite a few things to go over, but I'll be quick. Um, I'm gonna start with, um, the Schaefer Park. Um, the small playground that is there currently is not to code. Um, there's no fall protection under it. Um, we've had members of the community as well as my
Um, there's no fall protection under it. Um, we've had members of the community as well as my staff that has brought to our attention. As well as uh, Community Services Director, and we just had a conversation today about it. We have cordoned off that small playground for safety re, and liability reasons. Um. The intent at this time is to remove that playground equipment. Uh, my staff will be removing that equipment, taking it completely out of service. Um, and in the process of doing that, I'm working with the Community Services Director. We will be reaching out to uh, some of the. Um, playground equipment companies that we've worked with, Playtime, um, there's, there's like two or three of them that we're gonna reach out. Start having a discussion about design and whatnot. But uh, I just need to put the council on notice that that playground is coming out. Um, probably in the, before the end of the month, I will say. Um, so we'll be working on a resolution to put a new structure in that location. And I'm sure we'll be coming to council uh, with regards of funding and whatnot. Um, the next thing I wanna touch on is. The downtown uh, High Street project. So we had our bid opening last Thursday. Um, currently Yamabian Horn is going through the vetting process and that process consists of. Going through every single bid that was submitted for that open bid. Um, and making sure that all of their insurance, their bonds, their cohesion, collusion, everything is included. Per the requirements and the specifications and the state contract law for bidding those projects. So. We're going through that process. As soon as those things are vetted out, we will be able to come to council with a staff report and a recommendation. To award that project. Um, I did have a discussion earlier with city attorney. In regards to questions that were being asked for band festival and whatnot, what we were doing. I can tell you uh, council members that we are way ahead of that thing. Um, we realized two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago that we were not gonna be done by the twenty-fifth. So this morning, I met with my supervisor Ulysses and with staff from my road, the, the street maintenance department. And we discussed how we are going to fill in the areas where the bands and everybody are walking. We are going to siphon that up. We're gonna fill up with dirt, compact the dirt, put temporary asphalt about an inch thick in the areas where the bands are coming through. And the rest of the planner will be cordoned off. The safety fence and the T-posts that are there currently will come out. Probably a day or two before the event. And the reason why is for line of sight, so people can see that are sitting on the sidewalks. Take pictures and it's not obstructed by that view. But um, we will make sure that the liability is removed from those areas. Prior to the event on the twenty-fifth for the band festival. Um. There was discussion previously about possibly having a special called meeting, which I think we're trying to avoid. Uh, I'm hoping that my resolution for the band festival and securing those areas will kind of put it ease a little bit. Letting us get through that vetting process and bringing it back at the twenty-first council agenda. We've already talked to the city attorney. About putting that on the agenda for uh, accepting and, and, and letting us uh, move forward with that project. If council wants to discuss doing a special called meeting after that vetting process is done. And I'm not gonna speak for the city engineer or for Yamabian Horn, but I think by the end of this week, they're probably gonna be fairly close with that. And we just could not get it done before tonight's meeting. Three working days is not enough time. So that's where we're at with that project. And if you wanna discuss when I finish my updates, if, if you wanna change. Or if you, right now, Mr. Mayor, if you wanna discuss a different option, that's just kinda where we're at with that project right now. So. And I have more updates, but if you wanna discuss this now, we can.
Yes. Okay, so if um, we do have that special meeting on, say, Monday and you're able to award that job on, say, Monday. Um, or we would approve who you, you know, recommend. Yeah, we look at. Responsible bidder. Let's say we would do that on Monday, would you be able to get that job done in time for the band festival?
No, that won't happen.
How long will that concrete job take for that?
That, that job probably will only take the contractor and I'm not gonna speak for that contractor, whoever's awarded that. But from, coming from that side of, of, of the, of the fence, I think that project will be probably five to seven days. And it should be completely done. That's working days. Um, once it's approved and accepted by council. We have to go through the contract process, have all the contracts signed. Everything has to be uh, reviewed and accepted. And then we can actually give them a start date to start that contract. So I don't, we're almost down to, this Saturday, we're two weeks from that event. So even if we came in Monday, I don't think that in a week, we, and like that first week, next week, we could get them in contract. And then have the job done the following week. And that's what we would have to do to meet that twenty-fifth deadline. What's that?
Can we give it a shot?
We will, we will finish the vetting process if council would like to entertain and, and I don't wanna get the cart in front of the horse here. But uh, and if the city engineer would like to speak a little more about what they need as far as time to vet through that. Uh, we can do that, but um, uh, I don't wanna schedule a special called meeting because you have to put it out there to the public.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty, okay, twenty-four hour, I, we can shoot for it. I mean, we're not, I'm not saying no. I'm not saying I don't want to. Uh, city engineer, do you wanna? Give any input on this?
You can do it. I mean, if you, if they can get embedded and they can decide on who the real.
Yeah.
Uh, lowest responsible bidder is, we can award the contract to that person. But in that contract, there is a provision that um. Determines when you can issue a notice to proceed. The contractor needs a little bit of breathing room. After we sign the agreement. Uh, they need to come out and they, you get their ducks in a row, so to speak, so that they can mobilize on the project. And go forward. Uh, so I think you'd be cutting it really, really close. If, say, we got it on a special meeting for the fourteenth.
How about the tenth?
You, you actually awarded it, but just let's say you get it on there and on the tenth. Then I, I'm not sure what the notice to proceed provision is in the contract that they bid on. You can't change it now. Typically.
City engineer, what was the, what was that period?
I don't know it off the top of my head right now. The typical process is that it, you know, it's a few weeks. Contract issue to go through, construction and then timeline. All be shortened, there's a cost to shorten it, that if it wasn't bid that way with timelines. That all, that, we, you know, requesting the contractor to be done and out and clean by Thursday, the twenty-third. Um, may, may cost additional funding if it can be done.
Is the band festival is the twenty-fifth this year?
That is correct. Two weeks from this Saturday. It, it's, it, I'll be honest, Mr. Mayor, we're really gonna be pushing it to even try to attempt to get that done. And again, to, to the city engineer's point, um, the, the contractor absolutely has a right to push back. If, if it's not something in the specifications, when he looked at the job to bid it that said, hey, we're going to get this done by the twenty-fifth. So figure on mobilizing whatever you need for staff to get this done and make it happen. I don't believe that was spelled out in the specifications for the job. And that is the guideline that the contractors go by. And it makes it fair across the board for all of them. So uh, as soon as we get them to contract point and we have that pre-construction meeting. Even if we could get that done and make that meeting happen by, say, Wednesday of next week and go, okay, we need you guys in here by Friday. You got two days to get your stuff together and mobilize and you gotta be done by next Friday. They could tell us, whoa, wait a second. That was never discussed. And to the city engineer's point, they could come back and say, hey, we can do that, but that's gonna cost you an extra twenty-five grand.
Well, we don't ask people no.
No, no, I understand. I'm just, I'm giving you the realistics of it from the contractor's side. Uh, we can do, we can absolutely move as expeditiously forward as we can and try to hit that mark. But I think we're really gonna be pushing to get that work done by the twenty-fifth.
I, I mean, I think we were, we all wanted it done by Pepe Marquez and that didn't happen. Then we, then, then we were told it was gonna happen by the band festival. And now that's not gonna happen. So I mean, I would love to see us hit that second milestone, or at least try.
Understood.
You can't do it, you can't do it safely, but give it a shot.
I, I would like to uh, see if, if you're interested, uh, Mr. Mayor. I would be more than happy tomorrow to meet with yourself and maybe another council member on High Street. When you have time to go over what our plan is to secure that area and absolutely get a little input. Um, not direction, but input, uh, thoughts and then we can absolutely try our darnedest to get everything vetted. And get it to them as quick as we can.
Knock on my door. I'll be there.
Okay. I'm more than happy to go over that with you, just to put you at ease as far as safety and what we're doing.
Inside.
I have a question. Has the bid been open?
Last Thursday.
Okay, and the bid has been disclosed as to who's the low bidder or no?
It, it can't be until it's vetted.
Okay.
It was a public bid opening. The apparent low bidder was toasted asphalt.
Okay.
We've reviewed all the bids. Uh, we've vetted all of them already. So I got notice tonight that all of that was done. So what we may do, or what I can ask and talk to Mr. uh, Director Hahn about is how much communication we can have with the contractor. Before it's awarded to talk about uh, timelines.
Because they have, they, they sub, right? They sub, they sub out the concrete and they sub to Fresno, they sub out to Fresno concrete.
Mayor's point, we can try and have as much communication with the contractor.
We can, we can have a, a meeting, what, three days? Everybody good? Meeting Friday for one, one agenda item to approve this? Or sooner, Thursday?
We're not talking about a major big job. This is.
I mean, I know it's, it takes finesse and it takes skill.
So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Gera and Mayor Robertson, we completely understand.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it, I have to say and be very open and honest with you. It's extremely um, difficult sometimes sitting here with, with some of the questions and no disregard to any of you. I think part of the problem is that, number one, for us to make sure that we are putting out a hundred percent project. And I say that meaning that we, in the field, we call it holes or gaps in the plans. Um, when we rush through design, rush through contracting, there are mistakes that are made that some tend to be extremely costly. I think that it is very important that not only the council, but also the citizens understand. What the processes are that we have to go through to get to that point. And I, I, I've heard a lot of comments, especially tonight about different projects, the stop signal, we want it done too. We are tired, really tired of doing the work to come and continuously update where we're not at. We wanna get to the finish line. We wanna put it behind us and move forward. It is super important that we go through the steps and the process so that we don't have liability in these projects. When, this is a small, little chinky project, but it's mess, it's like muscle memory. We have to, every project, no matter how big or how small. We have to go through the same steps. Because when you get into six million dollar trunk sewer main projects. And you're trying to rush stuff because it becomes kind of systematic, that's how we do it. Come on, go, go, go. Those things will cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars in claims with the contractors. Because your plans aren't done right or the contract is not buttoned up the right way. So staff currently is taking this. The comm, a lot of the frustration from council and, and, and the public and, and we're like ducks, water rolling off our back. Because we still know we have to stay true to that process. So I appreciate the comment and I totally respect that. And believe me, I want that job done more than you can imagine. I wanna be off that street, off the radar. Like, I want it done. So we will move forward as quickly as we can and make, and making sure at the same time. That we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. To me, as a director, that is the most important thing. The liability on these projects for big or small, they can just be outrageous.
But we were, we were told by band festival, so let's try to do band. So we'll meet, if council can meet in a couple of days, council meet Thursday for one, a one item agenda. Everybody good for fifteen minutes?
Yep.
And look at the, look at this one night. I'm good for Thursday. I'll, I'll come here.
Do you guys have that ready by Thursday?
It's betted. Could you have that ready, city engineer?
I believe I have to have a staff report that has to be publicly noticed, so.
Twenty-four hours.
Staff report done in the morning, but.
It would be really early, but um, tomorrow's Wednesday. Would Friday be better and could we still get it done?
Friday would be better. Again, we're rushing through a process, so what's more important, that's what we have to decide here.
Can we do Friday? Why not?
Because I won't be here on Friday.
Could, could you still get it though? Could you still do the, get the staff report and have it ready? Even though you're not here and we could just have, um, you can make sure it's published, have someone publish it.
Surely, of course.
For Thursday?
Hmm.
So we'll retain that Friday date. That'll give you an extra day, which is not very long. But we wanna try to get this done. I mean, we got the band coming through. We got a lot of people coming for this band festival. And having a bunch of dirt out there, instead of having our beautiful new project out there, to me is a very, very poor second. I wanna make our town look really good. And I know our P I O wants to be able to broadcast our town and make it look really good. And I know you wanna make it look really good.
That's correct.
Because you've been working really, really hard on this project and you've saved the city a boatload of money on this project. So thank you for that. So let's continue it. You're almost to the finish line. Let's at least try.
Yes, sir. Understood.
All right.
Um, next item I have is um, the old Cattlemen sign or the old City of Selma sign at Cattlemen's. I discussed this with you last week, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have gone out and we have stripped all of the old wood sheeting off of there that looked absolutely terrible. And my apologies to the community and to the council. I never really honestly stopped and stood there and looked at the sign. I drove by it many times, even after I was asked, hey, let's take this thing and I made a comment off the cuff. Yeah, we're just gonna pull it out of the ground and put it in the. I was completely off base there and my apologies for that. Um, that sign is not gonna move. That frame, that structure for that is actually red iron steel beam that's concreted probably about eight to ten feet in the ground. And it's in great shape. And so I made a couple of suggestions, just kind of off the cuff, uh, in a phone conversation. And I think that now that it's stripped down to nothing, um, Director Fletcher has informed me that we have a committee meeting. Next Wednesday for Pioneer Village Committee and the Park Rec Committee. And so I will be attending that with her. And we will be discussing options. I think that um, that because of the talk of what we wanna do with Pioneer Village. For future um, expansion and just to liven that whole thing up for events. I think that that sign is in a perfect location to really present a muralistic looking sign. That represents the history of Pioneer Village in Selma. There are several options that we have for their, uh, for that location and that sign. That we'll discuss in that meeting next Wednesday, but things to think about, uh, one thing you, one thing I suggest is, is completely re-sheeting. With new wood and then, again, there's several options. You can get a mural painted on it. You can get a freeway billboard sign company to print out anything you want, just like on the freeways. And they can come and laminate it on. It won't last as long as a mural, but a mural, once it starts chipping and fading away, you've gotta have them come back and repaint it. So we will be looking at those, but the sign has been taken down. And I apologize, it took so long to get that done. Um, the next uh, item that I have is the other big project, our Musco Lights. We are still on track to receive our concrete foundations and the new electrical panels, the switchgear panels on the twentieth. Um, we have already gone out and we've done all of the continuity testing of everything that's existing. And everything is functioning in good shape and will be accepted by Musco. We've already had Bob look at it when we had the electrician out doing that work. Um, and then the bait, the actual poles are supposed to, to, to deliver. On the twenty-seventh and it is still the same schedule that we published like three weeks ago when they first sent it to us. And I called Bob that day and I'm like, hey, man, like November one, bro, lights have gotta go on. And his comment was that his contractor that will be doing the work will probably stand those poles, all of them in about two days. Like they're in and gone. So that's why they will be doing the foundations first. So that when the poles actually do deliver, it's literally slip them together and stand them up and they're done. Uh, my staff will be right behind the pole standing and we will be doing the slot trenching from the existing. Junction boxes to the new pad locations and tying that conduit in. And then all our electrician has to do. Is help us pull the wire into those new feeds and then we plug the lights in and we should be good to go. So that is still currently the tentative schedule and um, that's what we're sticking to.
We're thinking the bandits will be able to practice at night, November first. Around there. Around there?
That's between the Community Services Director and the gentleman that runs the football league, but. I, I can tell you, and this isn't a department update, but since it's been brought up, we have been, since the pickleball lights are done, and I appreciate the very kind. Uh, comments tonight by the woman that was here, she actually came out. Uh, Monday of last week, my first day back, when I wanted to see this project that I was dying to see, and there was probably. Probably twenty people on the pickleball court. She came out, shook mine in Ulysses' hands, thanked us just repeatedly and said. You see all those people on that court over there? And I said, yeah, and she said, you know, five of them are from Fresno and four are from Kingsburg. They're coming here now to play pickleball, and she said that they were looking at a night league and all kinds of stuff, but in that process. Staff noticed that some of the old wood telephone poles, not around the Babe Ruth field so much, but more over in that practice field area. There are some major rot issues, and one of the poles has, it literally, it looks like a woodpecker has sat on the ground and literally pecked. All the way through the base of the pole, it's like you could drive through it, it's huge. So, in going through the Musco process and figuring out the lighting, there were some online companies that I talked to you about. And council about five-year warranties, but they were just the LED heads, more energy efficient and whatnot. I'm gonna start looking at that and probably will be coming to council and maybe not mid-year, I gotta get my stuff together, but for sure. When we do twenty-six, twenty, or twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal. To be, uh, going in and funding to replace the lights, not only at Babe Ruth, but around that field where the Cal Ripken field is. At that point, I think that's gonna give a great opportunity to Tony the gentleman to use that field. And would free up softball and other activities at the Schaefer Park area that's designed for softball.
Cal Ripken is saying, there's a team that practices there, and they want the, the line between the bases. For them to be able to run, however, I thought we were, the city was gonna repurpose it as a, as a soccer field. And as a football training field for the Bandits, which, which usage is, is it going to go towards?
I've had briefly touched on that in a discussion with Director Fletcher, and, um, that's something that I think that we need to have more conversations about. I think that there is also a girls' travel softball team that uses that field to practice, um. And we are aware of the baselines that they're trying to get cleared out, and that kinda got stopped. Last week, from what I understand, because of our written policy for our city staff being the only ones. Because of liability that will work on those fields, um, but what they're doing, just trying to clean the baselines off. Um, I've spoke again with Director Fletcher and with Matthew who runs the youth athletics programs over there, um, and we. I think we're okay with that, we're working through that, so we're not gonna keep people from doing nothing. Um, the small little weed eating stuff, we're still having that discussion, we haven't determined one way or another, but. Um, to your question, there are many options for that location, I think that. We need to have more conversations, maybe even a town hall, where these, uh, youth football, softball, they can come in and discuss the options. It can be a multi-purpose field, it could be soccer, it could be football, it could, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we could do there. So we are in those conversations, that's not being put to the wayside, uh, and we will bring something to council, recommendation, or. The possibility of maybe scheduling a town hall with our PIO and putting it out there so people can come in and give us their ideas of what they want. So we're working on that.
You know, that's why it's important to get Thompson Park, where is Thompson Park? Um, also, there was, uh, when we were campaigning, there was a request by the city community that they wanted a place to play cricket.
Thompson Park would be a good place for a cricket court. My, I, 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 uh, I hear you, uh, Councilman Osagura, um. And we've heard a lot of the things that people are requesting or would like to have as far as amenities. My whole thought process is that I wanna fix what we have before we start building more. And that might not always happen, but we have a lot of things that need to get cleaned up around our parks that we're working. Day and night trying to get done, and so, um.
Like, no, no, I agree, but the reason I bring it up is because we're bringing up soccer and all this and all that, but you got a big community there that also has a need. And they, they play, you know where they play? They play out in the street, in the street.
So I can tell you that Director Fletcher has purchased new goals for, um, Ringo Park. Um, and we are looking at ripping sod out of there and re-grading that entire field. Uh, but that has to be coordinated between activities and soccer and whatnot. That field needs some work, and we're well aware of it, I've been aware of it since right after I started my position here, so we are looking at that. Um, that whole field really needs to be stripped of sod, needs to be re-graded so that it's, so that it has a crown and drains properly. And then it needs to be re-sodded, but we have got new goalposts, so we're, we're making steps to get there.
I mean, every time I see my DP, he always tells me, where's my cricket?
So I can tell you, Ringo has gotten some love this year, um, we have put the two shade structures, we finally closed the grant out from a year and a half ago. Those two shade structures went up about three months, two and a half, three months ago, so the playground is shaded now, um, we've done some work in the restrooms there. Um, and then we're gonna be putting the new goalposts in and looking at that field, so.
Talking about restrooms, uh, we need to do something about Pioneer Village restrooms. I understand there's a structure there to actually add, uh, restrooms there, the sewer is there already, that's what I understand. I mean, have you gone out there and taken a look at that?
I, I've not only taken a look, Councilman Osagura, but I've sat through numerous meetings and planning for the Pioneer Village plan, the new design. We have discussed that, uh, in, in several meetings, um. And I know what the vision is out there, and I can tell you that, um. We can build, we can build more restrooms, but I can tell you right now, if you have an event with fifteen hundred people or two thousand people. Unless you build literally restrooms all the way around the, you're, you're, we're still gonna have a lot of the same issues. I understand the need for more restroom facilities at that location, and that's part of the design that's in the Pioneer Village design plan.
Right, I agree, but that's gonna take too long for us, we're moving, we're moving forward, because you know what, the number, listen to me. The number one complaint we get from Pioneer Village is not the design or the amphitheater, that's millions of dollars that we don't have right now. The biggest complaint, and Director Fletcher will tell you, it's the bathrooms. It is not that you need bathrooms all around, the men can go in the porta-potties, but have you gone, have you been to a porta-party after a man I'm used to for a couple hours? You think women are gonna go in there? They look at me and say, what the hell's going on?
Understood.
I said, well, I'm embarrassed, it's an embarrassment for the city not to have. Director Fletcher has been working hard to try to get some luxury bathrooms, run it up for these, why? Because the women are getting tired of waiting and waiting for this wonderful. Twenty million, thirty million dollar project, that's not gonna happen anytime soon, I mean, I would love to have an amphitheater. But that's gonna take time, the number one priority at that park is the restrooms.
And so, if I could, uh, Councilman Osagura, I can tell you that, um, we have facilitated. Opening bathrooms in the Danish Building, I'm not gonna speak of which event, but I can tell you it occurred last year. Because of the size of the event, even with the porta-potties and the restrooms that are there outside, that are permanent fixtures. We opened up the building to allow more access. And I can definitely bring pictures and show council, after that event, it cost my department about three hundred and fifty dollars in material. Broken, people kicked the toilet paper thing off the wall, they broke the toilet seat. And that was inside the Danish Building, that was a nice, clean, prepared restroom, absolutely good for women to go in, it's more comfortable, it's not. Men's urine all over, I get that, but that's what happened to that building, so we don't even open that building for events now. We, we have tried to facilitate some of these issues, but that's what we get back. So I can tell you, if you want bathrooms, what council needs to do. Is give direction to the city manager for us to move forward with design to put restrooms out there, and we can go build restrooms, that's not a problem.
We'll hear from the grant writer.
That's not a problem.
This rock and roll, we're ready.
Yeah.
Thank you, there's a lot on your plate, but.
Yeah.
Really confident that you can get this done, and we're, we, we know, cause you did it with Musco, and you're getting there. And this downtown, we have every confidence in you, that you're gonna achieve this, this goal, I know you are overburdened and overtaxed, but. This is what you live for.
Right.
So you're gonna do this, and we're, we're behind you every step of the way.
And I appreciate that. And this is my job, it's not an overburden, this is just what comes with the job, and I appreciate the comment, and we will absolutely get it done. I only have one more item, real quick, touch briefly with, uh, City Attorney Costanzo. Um, I received a letter from Margie, our interim HR Director. Last week that I had to go through, and it was from the Department of Industrial Relations. We had a claim against the city for the new police station project that happened seven, eight years ago when that was built. Uh, it turns out that one of our contractors that worked on that project did not pay an employee all of his wages, and that employee turned. The contractor over to DIR. DIR, the way it works, for those who don't know, just real quickly, they do an investigation, they go through everything, vet it out, they go back and look at all of the. The payroll audits from the prevailing wage from the project and all of that. They, their determination was that, yes, the employee was underpaid twenty-seven hundred and change, I don't have the exact number. With DIR, the way that it works is that the contractor is not the one responsible right now. The owner of the project is responsible to pay those. There is liquidated damages after sixty days of receiving the notice from DIR, if the funds are not paid to DIR. And those liquidated damages are basically interest on that twenty-seven hundred dollar payment. So payment has been made by HR, but from payroll, we have done the pay app, we have, uh, sent. I'm assuming that's been processed and that's going out. I talked to Mr. Costanzo briefly before the meeting started tonight, we're, we have information, the letters from DIR. Everything that I'm going to have to put together and submit to him, and he is going to have to pursue reimbursement from the contractor, so. I'm just putting the council on notice because it will be on the check register, it's gonna say Department of Industrial Relations, people are gonna ask questions. And I wanna be very clear about where. I'm just, because you're, I mean that in a positive way, you're very thorough of pulling out things that are questionable, so. It's gonna come up, I'm just putting you on notice that that's where we're at, and, uh, City Attorney Costanzo can follow up with, uh.
They were a contractor on the job.
They were a secondary contractor working for the general contractor.
And so they would have had a contract with the general contractor, mirroring the contract of the GC with the city, correct? Holding the city harmless for any bodily injury, property damage or any issues?
But not only that, that particular project, you had that provision in there that it was. The union labor. So, you know, we might have to get the union involved. But you'll, you'll collect every dime that you put out, and you'll probably, um. Tell them that you're, they're gonna have to pay your attorney's fees in dealing with it.
Yeah.
They should, thank you for, um, let us know that.
Yeah, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, alright, with, with that, we're done with departmental reports, we're gonna take.
Oh, I just want to, quick, quick, um, I'm asking, um, Deputy City Manager, I requested the spreadsheet. For this to be given to all of us this meeting, did we get that?
It, it'll be on the next meeting agenda.
Also, before we close this, um, section, um, what about the minutes? We haven't seen minutes in a long time, that was supposed to be coming, no? That's what I understood.
Yes, those will be at the next meeting. Can you please address the disruptive people at the back of the room? When I speak, they always seem to have a comment or laugh, and I would just like to say that if you have a comment, feel free to come up to the podium.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have rules of conduct here.
And they apply to everyone.
They apply to everyone, but we also have, we also have free speech here, so, you know, things can get. Um, a little heated when we're talking about things that doesn't include harassment in, in any form, so we understand what you're saying. Um, so we wanna all, um, definitely show, um, the respect that we, um, expect people to show us as well. Should, show it to others.
Thank you.
That will wish the, um, our, um, departments a good, good evening, who don't, don't have any more business with the city, and we'll take a five-minute break and get right back to business. Thank you.
I gotta walk. I know, we only have, what, one more agenda? I know, we only have, what, one more agenda?
Yes, we're gonna move on to our, uh, number four. New business, um, action item, consideration of resolution twenty twenty five ninety six R. Adopting an environmentally preferable purchasing policy and consideration of resolution. Twenty twenty five dash ninety seven R, authorizing the application submittal. For the Cal Recycle Rubberized Pavement Grant Program fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, City Engineer Horn.
Mayor, members of the council, so yeah, the item before you, uh, has two parts. Uh, the first part is, uh, recommending, uh, environmentally preferable purchasing policy. Uh, this type of policy is something that is, uh, typically required when the city. Wants to go after grant money that has to do with environmentally sustainable type items. Grants will require that the city has this type of policy or a portion of the policy. In order to consider giving you money for that type of work. Um, that's the first part. The second part is a resolution for consideration to, for the council to approve the application that we've submitted with Public Works Department. To Cal Recycle that has a grant, uh, for recycled rubber chip seal pavement surfacing. Gone through that application process, uh, worked with, uh, Director Han, submitted the application. Provided all the information that's required. And one item that is needed in order to be considered is a resolution from the council approving the application. And that, that can be submitted after the applications are due. So that deadline to submit that type of resolution is, I believe, in October or November. So we have time to submit that. So just in, in general, this environmentally preferable purchasing policy. Doesn't replace, in my opinion, the purchasing policy the city has. It just adds, uh, an element of preferred, the, the city prefers to use recycled, uh, content when it can. Uh, try, using from paper to toner to asphalt. All of the different, uh, things the city purchases, it's, it's preferred. And I think it, uh, from my opinion, uh, Director Han can chime in. Uh, that's, that's a sentiment that I believe the city would. Get behind, that we are trying to be sustainable, trying to use recycled, uh, material when we can. Uh, the policy, the language in there is, it's, it's preferred, it's not required. So it is not mandating that the city purchase certain materials. It's just stating that this is preferred and when we're looking at having a choice of what we can buy. Let's, let's prefer to try and have recycled, uh, type of materials. But that's from my perspective, that's generally what this policy, uh, deals with.
And, and to add to, uh, the city engineer's comments, I think it's part of like the RTP, uh, round table at Fresno Cog. Um, part of the future funding in the RTP will be tied to sustainable materials. So this just sets us up for more flexibility in the future if these type of items become available.
It'll help us get grants in the future and get funding for these regional transportation programs, stuff like that.
Absolutely. Uh, and, and one more added, uh, uh, layer to that is, as we all know, SB thirteen eighty three, we're, uh. Introducing that program to the city, slowly moving through that process, um, new software for tracking and whatnot. Cal Recycle is actually considering for smaller municipalities that are struggling to meet their quota. For recycled like compost mulch that we've discussed previously in meetings. Um, they're, they're discussing possibly giving some credits for other applications like rubberized asphalt. Because it's recycled tires, because a lot of the smaller municipalities are struggling with that quota amount. Um, and it, it also puts us out as kind of a lead type, uh, city where we're trying to be as. Again, environmentally friendly as possible, but we're showing that. We, every project and every opportunity we have, we are using recycled material. Um, less carbon footprint, it's, uh, again recycled, so it's, uh, it's being, uh, uh, repurposed. Um, and it allows us some of our projects too, um. And we haven't gotten into this car, I haven't discussed this with the city engineer or with assistant city manager. But we can actually, like some of our road projects, if we adopt this, and this is kind of the direction the city council wants to continue going. Um, we can spec out in some of our projects or requirements to use a certain amount of recycled material. It happens commonly from the state level all the way down. So it just, this allows more opportunity for the city to be more eco-friendly and also look for grant opportunities by going through this process.
So, um, so that's the first part that we're recommending, that the city adopts this, uh, environmentally preferred policy. The second part is the Cal Recycle application that was submitted. Uh, worked with Director Han, looking at our roadway segments and the pavement, uh, management system that we have. With an updated, uh, pavement condition index that was provided from a county study. There are certain segments that this apply, this, uh, material applies to very well. And can extend the life of that roadway, uh, beyond, uh. Typical slurry seals, regular cape seals. So that we can extend the life of those segments and not have to spend more money on maintenance. So our engineers looked at the different, uh, roadway segments that this applies to. It doesn't apply to all roadways. If certain roadways are beyond a certain point with too many cracks, this is not a good solution. But there are roadways that are, that are structurally sound but have, uh, some minor cracks in the top. This is a great solution. So our engineers found the segments, we reviewed them with Director Han. Uh, the grant requires a certain minimum of square yardage to be applied, so we've met that minimum. And then the grant will then reimburse us for a certain amount of the total cost. So pa- uh, part of the project, if it gets funded, we'll be recommending with Director Han. Using Measure C money, local transportation funds, other funds that we would typically use for roadway maintenance. Apply to this project and hope, and get money from Cal Recycle. So we're recommending the, uh, passing the resolution that is accepting that application so that it can be. I can answer any questions if you have any.
What, what's the potential downside of either item that you're proposing tonight?
I, I don't, I don't, I can't think of any downsides to the environmentally preferred, uh, policy because it's just preferred.
It's not woke BS that not gonna get, uh, on the radar of federal programs and get us unfunded, okay? It's just common sense when you use economically or ecologically friendly materials that we need to sustain our, our world in the future.
And, and, and if anything is the, you know, city engineer said, it gives us some flexibility when there's opportunities. To use this type of material when it becomes available, we're already set because we have the adopted policy, right? There's a lot of cities that don't have this, um, already on the books. This just gives us a leg up to apply if it becomes available. It doesn't make it a requirement, um, for, you know, development projects, city projects. It's if, it's preferred if, if we, if it happens to be available. Um, and getting, um, you know, an amount that we can use to fix roads. Uh, and extend the usable life of them, you know, lowers overall maintenance in the long term. So that we can, you know, send money elsewhere to do other projects that we wanna do and so.
Ability to increase our, our PMI, pavement management.
It'll, so as David talked about, the PMI identifies the roads that are in severe need of repair. And I would imagine that this type of material, there's a certain score of where this is better applied. And when you use it on a road, it would improve the PMI so that you don't have to come back and immediately repave it. It would extend again the life of that road, so you're not having to come back and do a full, you know, strip and reconstruction of that road. Instead, a chip seal is more like an interim maintenance procedure to allow the road to last longer.
Seems like it's cheaper to, to increase your PMI than say actually just going and building a new road or resurfacing the road or doing the slurry. I mean, it's incredible, I'm doing this Measure C and it's so expensive just to get your. Your, um, pavement management index from like a sixty one to a sixty five. It's incredible how much repaving.
If you're up in the sixties, you're doing, that would help.
If you're in the sixties, yeah, something might even hit the sixties.
Oh, real quick, the PMI index that we received that information as, as the city engineer spoke of from the county, that you were involved with that. That was through Fresno Cog, Fresno County Cog, and that was the, uh, assets that they put on their vehicles and drove all of the. City streets that all of the participating agencies wanted to get in on. And we got in on it, so that, you were a part of that, so thank you for that. But that absolutely gives us instead of like Assistant City Manager said, a full depth remediation. Like we had to do like on the ABC streets, some of those roads over there. Super pricey, you have to go into the structural, uh, section under the asphalt, rebuild that, then you have to repave full thickness of the road. This allows us to get a cheap alternative wear surface, as they call it. That allows tire wear to continue wearing another five to ten years on that road before you have to go to that point of. Either milling the road down and rebuilding up an inch and a half or two inches or taking it down full depth. It's just, it's a cheap way of keeping the roads maintained in, in a way that, in a manner that allows. The city engineer to put out the projects as needed and to keep the roads in a safe drivable manner.
And if Measure C doesn't pass, and who knows what's gonna happen with that next year, we're gonna need, we're gonna need the roads.
If, if Measure C.
As long as possible.
If Measure C doesn't pass. Oh, I would imagine our CIP projects would be one or two road projects a year.
Yeah.
Compared to thirteen.
Oh, yeah. Drastically reduced.
It, it absolutely does and it's imperative that we renew that measure to ensure our infrastructure stays maintained. We have safe drivable roads for our residents, ADA ramps, the whole thing, right? A lot of the funding that this city receives is an allocation through Fresno Cog for various projects. And so, um, I've been at the meetings, I've heard that, you know, we're, we provide feedback to whatever we can. Um, it is imperative for this agency that that measure passes.
Very important. The public have any questions about this agenda item? Anybody online or on the phone?
Mayor, I see no hands raised right now.
Right, bringing back to council, is there a motion on item four one?
I'll make a motion.
Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, item four two, discussion item only. Yes, item four two, discussion item only, discussion of potential projects.
It was for the engineer, but she left. I know we're gonna start some projects at the middle of October, and I'm referring to Mr. Gonzalez's sidewalk. And I, we had told him, because we talked to him, and I think I talked to you, we said we're gonna start in the middle of October. Putting a sidewalk in, and I know he's gonna call me. Do we know where we're at on that?
Just for you.
That's that's on Nebraska, David.
The CDBG sidewalk connectivity. That's on the agenda for the next meeting, I believe the twenty-first. Council to award that project, and that then will begin the contract and start. There's a deadline with CDBG and the HUD funding that we get the project done by a certain date, so we're working on that.
I'll let him know.
It'll be done in two days, right?
I believe I recall I sent you the section of the plans that shows his segment of sidewalk that's gonna be done.
He wants it done.
He sure does. All right, this is a discussion item only, discussion of potential projects allowed. Under T-Mobile Hometown Grant, subsequent discussion of various grant opportunities, Sonia Hall, our grant writer.
Hi, thank you. So so we're just talking about the T-Mobile grant, and the T-Mobile grant. I know that you applied for it before, but but there are other. I know that you had mentioned that you wanted to talk about other opportunities, other ways to use it. So there are other ways to use it that can include park and recreation, facility enhancement. Which you had spoken about bathrooms, so that's one way you can use it for bathrooms. Community art installations, trail, any kind of things like that. But yeah, I know that you, like I said, you had mentioned bathrooms, but and parks, so that's that's a good way to use it as well. So if, I just wanted to hear what your thoughts were, and we can apply for that that grant. That grant does need to be completed within twelve months of the award date, so it does have to be a project that is shovel-ready.
Can I apply to mobile, mobile restrooms?
Yes.
So other words, it's portable, you know, like the reason why she said that, like Lincoln Park is actually one of them. And so is Ringo Park, their module, I call them modules setup. Their prefab set, and they drop them in and they, hey, they're ready to go, and they look nice, you know what I mean? And I mean, it's, is, I wanna say it's easy and cost-effective and more efficient.
Now, that they have awarded, I believe it's one another park here, another city in the Central Valley got a restroom.
They did, it was Kingsburg. Kingsburg got a restroom for their park, and then Reedley got improvements for their opera house. That's what they're, that's that's hot right now for the hometown grants.
Community arts, that's what they're looking at, arts and parks.
On that note, Sonia, now, the these, this particular grant, is it, you apply every? I was reading it, is it?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, so.
It's quarterly.
So so in other words, you could finish one quarter and then apply for another grant? I mean, can you?
Yes.
So let's say, let's say, the reason why I'm asking that question, let's say, hey, let's let's look at the art. Quick art center, and then we go to the restrooms, or the restrooms first, you know, wherever prioritized to our direction.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
So what's the, what's the maximum amount for the?
It's fifty thousand.
And question, the question is. The bath, the bathrooms range, what's the price, what, what do you think it costs us?
I'm not sure what the bathroom.
The portable restrooms, um, I think they're about eighty. Yeah, I think the the modular ones are about eighty. To rent, they're significantly cheaper, but. I'm trying to pull up the the estimate we had for the restrooms in the Pioneer Village master plan versus the modular, because I know that was a six-figure item.
Okay, so in regards to the grant, when you stip, when you say that it's a fifty thousand max and it has to be shovel-ready. Could it be shoveled ready, but if it's over budgeted, will they still fund it? Can we go into a phase?
We would probably supplement through other funds. This would be a contribution, which was the intent when we applied for the grant last time. We knew the cost was gonna be above what the downtown lighting project was, and this was to help offset impact to the general plan.
So are we good with, well, let's hear from the public, what would the public, what do you guys think about? Bathrooms or art center? Where should, where should we apply for this art, for this hometown grant?
Hi, Brian Maris, I would say the restrooms, it's number one thing right now, that's, I currently serve on the Parks and Recreation slash Pioneer Village Committee. That's the number thing that we talked about. We made a list, we unfortunately, this Fletcher's in here, but we made a list. At our last meeting, what is the number one priority of, out of everything? Parks was the number one. I'm sorry, Pioneer Village was number one for the restrooms, so that's my input, thank you.
As much as we love the art center, and there's a Measure K money that does get allocated there, and this does need work. So hopefully we could find some funding there, but absolutely with these events that are coming, whether they're gonna be here at our park. At the Lincoln Park, but Pioneer Village, absolutely bathrooms, and they should have been built a long time ago. There's plumbing there already from what I understand, and but that Pioneer Village should have had those restrooms a long time ago. So absolutely restrooms, thank you.
Anybody online or on the phone with a with a vote?
Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
All right, I think it's pretty clear that restrooms.
I'll move forward with with that application.
And then that's gonna be a percentage of what it takes to actually get them. Are there, can you be on the lookout for other grant opportunities for other restrooms?
Definitely. Well, we do also have Prop Four that will be coming out later in the year. Prop Four is another grant application that's similar to Prop sixty-eight, the Big Park Grant. That will be probably worth about, we could probably apply for about seven million. And so that could be for either a new park or rehab of a park, but I would apply for a new park.
Oh, yeah. Wow, that's great. We need to apply for that.
That's coming toward the end of the year.
Okay, appreciate you and Victoria coming out to our office, Mayor Protenz and I, and and meeting with us. That was really helpful. You went over the various grants that are available. I know you'd be meeting with with staff as well during staff meeting, and then. Maybe on a monthly basis, meet with the other other council members, the the two there. Okay, and then Councilmember Trujillo as well.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our future agenda items, this is a council request for future agenda items. Not subject to public comment, items require consensus. Does council have any future agenda items at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to put the McGrath.
The what now?
The McGrath, the modular.
Oh, modular.
Yeah, no, the the company, they wanted them to do a presentation.
Oh, March, okay.
October twenty-first.
Module grabbed, okay.
Any else? Okay, I'd like to put on there, I would like to eliminate the Administrative Services Director position. Number two, I'd like to waive any permit fees for the upcoming. American Legion Memorial Ceremony on November first. And three, I'd like to get a art center policy on volunteers. On all, all, all city volunteers, including art art center. Especially where kids are involved, that's where we should really focus.
Well, we we want to impose that requirement on, say, you know, baseball leagues, football leagues.
Sports, arts, anything involving the kids, the volunteers, whether paid or not, should be, should get fingerprinted. Yep, especially volunteers. Hey, anything else, Jim?
Can we put on the agenda about the breeder? Ordinance change we were talking about, if possible, or maybe?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
The breeders, you know, the breeder ordinance?
Oh, yeah, that that should be coming back to us any day. We had to send that up to a division of the Department of Consumer Affairs that specifically regulates. Dog breeding, so that they could check it and make sure we weren't overstepping, you know, their requirements. So there's there's a bunch of state agencies that force you to do that every time you. Adopt a particular regulation or ordinance that covers the same subject area that they cover.
I get it.
HCD is fond of doing this, do you? Anything you have to do, any ordinance you adopt that relates to like ADUs. That relates to any kind of, anything that has anything to do with affordable housing. HCD has to review it, so it's just one of those. Pet peeves on the part of the state.
So you can't be more drastic, you can't go beyond what those regulations are.
No, they they want you to go beyond what their regulations are. What they don't want you to do is is provide a loophole. Or, you know, excuse for somebody not complying fully with their regulations as they interpret them.
They don't want you to go.
Which which may or may not really be consistent with the language, because HCD, for example. Likes to tell you that all ADUs have to be at least. A certain square footage, right? And that's not technically in the law that they're enforcing, it's it's something of their own creation. So it's just, ready to do?
Then also I'd like to see, I was put a, a TNR for cats. I mean, the feral cat population here in Selma is, it's huge. I know a person that she's already on her own done like. Thirty cats, you know, she reached out to the shelter and they said they couldn't help, so she's. Been getting help from somebody to trap them, and she takes them herself and pays the thirty dollars per cat and gets them. Sure.
Sure.
I have money to help people. I have told people that I'd be happy to, you know, pay them. But they also have to do a little work, they have to maybe do some trapping. Then after that, the cats are sedated, they have to be held somewhere in their spare bathroom, their porch, whatever. You know, if it's hot out, cold out, or they're in, you know, open spaces. That's, that is, I've been trying to preach this, and and so. I can't reach everybody, obviously, through Selma on the news or Facebook or whatever, she's probably not even on that. But, you know, I'm hoping with word of mouth, she can be told that she can call me. You know, and I can, I can help her, I've got food. If you feed a cat, if you feed a stray or a feral cat. You also need to TNR the cat, because you're part of the problem, even though you think you're helping, you know. And and you know what I mean? One lady had ninety cats, and she passed away. And and I met the lady that lived next door on her own money, she's a teacher. She fixed ninety cats by herself. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a deal.
Yes, and by putting it on the agenda, what I wanna do is make sure that we reach out, and we have a wonderful public information officer. And also maybe we can also contribute to make it easier.
Oh, yeah, that's my whole point of being here tonight. And I would love to go into the schools, I've done story times, you know, I may be seventy-five, but I can still, you know, relate to the kids do story times. They've got storybooks in Spanish and in English on, you know, you found a lost cat, what do you do? You have a feral cat, you know, what, what is, what is, you know, I mean, there's. We have people here that don't speak English, I don't speak Spanish and the other languages, but we need to reach out to them. The cultures are different, so let's just have animals and let them breed, you know, and then if they wander off, fine. That's not the way it's gonna work, you have to educate the people. Say, that cannot be done.
Public Information Officer, he speaks Spanish too, so he'd be able to do videos and.
Yeah, I mean.
Reach out to the community.
Yeah. My friend and I did this, started this ourselves, I actually started, she helped me, she helped me learn how to TNR when I was seventy-two. Now I'm seventy-five, and. Uh, we have, we have had kittens die in our arms, we've taken them from feral mommies. A yard that you cannot convince the person that it needs to be treated for fleas. The cat, the kittens and the cats were dying of flea infestation in my arms. So we, we do what we can, we clean them up, you know, and we try to keep them warm. But anyway. I would have made it quicker.
Thank you for your dedication.
We've seen a lot, not all, but I watch it on on the TV. I've seen all the dummies.
Drive by Pioneer Village on the way home, see six or seven cats there tonight, it's sad, Home Depot. I don't wanna get any discussion, we're good, we're good, we gotta move, we gotta move along, but thank you. We will, thank you. All right, more, let's move on to council reports.
You forgot him.
Let's go.
Hey, I I I want an update on the. Center on the, they have a, I wanna say the grill return fan. Cause they can't use a stove because it doesn't have a return fan, we need to update on that, where they're at, so. And also, I need an update on all the road projects that we have set up for the end of the year. Check on David, and. And also where we at on the Amwood project and their construction site. Timeline with their, and also a, also give me a cost. What it costs from, from the Dinuba project to the. Golden State, uh, see what's gonna cause a trunk line, a sewer line. And also might as well do the water, see what it's gonna cost, that way have it wherever. That way we have a pretty good idea where we're at, and of course, we know about the light, so we're gonna put up. I knew the light, so we're gonna need to update, you know, people have been waiting a way long time.
Oh, yeah, yep.
On that, not on issue, so. And that's all I gotta say right now.
Future agenda items, or which one, where, what's where you at?
All of them.
You kinda lost me.
There are more updates.
Very good. Now we'll move on to number six, council reports. You're up again.
I have a list, I have three pages, Ace. Okay, I I. I attended the, oh, I, watch this, guys, they had opening ceremony Kaiser Hospital, new opening in Fresno. I attended it, and that same day, I attended the Boys and Girls Dinner in Fresno. And I met Jason, and at the same, at that same, that same day. I I made it back to Pepe Marquez's, to the Park in Selma. Had a great event, it was still going on, believe it or not, a lot of people there. It took me a while to find my chair, somebody took my chair, but that's okay, but and also. I I attended the the Fresno Fair grand opening, the Fresno Fair, I was there. And Osi was there as well, he was there, and and I, at the same time, I, since I was at the fair. I went and looked at the the Awo Culture, Selma's display of Awo Culture, fantastic, guys. They they're probably gonna get a brewer, they had a lot of big display. And also that's, and I also did the March for Jesus. And and with our comrades here up here, and and also I did, at the same day, we had, I went to Curry Cantina. They had a car show, I was there, and not least, I had to show up to the Cruze's Fair. My old stomping ground, I see if I can win my, I win a car, all those years, the only fair and it's left. My old stomping ground. I see if I can win my, I win a car. All those years, they're the only fair and it's left in the state. That gives away a car. Had only a five dollar ticket, that's all it is. No, they didn't call me.
Next.
And that's it. That's all I gotta say.
Good one. Councilman Trill.
Well, I was gonna say I attended some stuff, but he covered everything, so I guess, I guess not.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Selma Live, which was. And they deserve it. You know, these are the good things that our citizens deserve and we're gonna continue to do. Bigger and better, you know, that's, that's what we're gonna do. Um, the other thing, I did attend the Walk for Jesus, which was another great event. Um, thank you to Pastor Alvarez for the invite and. For everybody coming together. It was really a great event. Um, the other thing, I just wanna thank our staff and. Public Works, everyone that just, you know, does such a great job keeping our city. Safe, keeping our city clean and moving our city forward with these projects that we continue to. Put some heat on them, but they're doing, they're doing their best job and we really appreciate that. So um, other than that, that's pretty much it for me.
Yeah, we have definitely um, set, set the bar high. And we're setting the bar high for ourselves because the people set the bar high for us. They, they want results and that's, and that's what they deserve. They deserve a good town that's. Peaceful and um, has, has great events. It's really coming alive. I mean, I've, going to Selma Live last week. What really struck me, the music was great, but it was all the volunteers. It was all the people that came out from Selma to help. People who didn't get paid for it, people who just do this because they, they love their town. People who love cats. Like this lady right there, you know, who do things out of the goodness of their heart. That's what makes Selma. People who do this for, for. Because they, they love it. They love being here and they love giving back. I, I just, that makes Selma so special. Um, I wanna also thank uh, Mike Navarro. We talked about him earlier. Caltrans, um, they're cleaning the on-ramp at Floral and Ninety-Nine. Um, he's working on the tents over there, so that could take a little bit of doing, but he's gonna, he's gonna work on. Um, clearing that. Um, also wanna thank my, my wife, Rose. She did great at Selma Live. She pretty much provided the security for the beer garden and um, you know, she was, she was on social media and saw a little boy from uh. Jackson School was being bullied. And she said, come on out, come on out to the office and um, you know, we got something for you. And um. So he, he was able to, to come out, got something. What, what did you give him? What did you? There you go. To make him feel special. It wasn't a big deal, but he was getting bullied and, you know, that's, who hasn't? Who hasn't gotten bullied in their, in their time and just made him feel special as, as mom came out with him. Very nice take a picture with him and I was really proud to uh. To, to have, have my wife do that. That was, that was awesome. And uh, I, I'm, I'm proud to be a, a Selma resident. So thank you, everybody. Um, and we're gonna go to our last round of oral communications. Does anybody have anything to say before we say goodnight?
Just quickly going back to Selma Live, I just wanna uh, again, thank um, the sponsorships, um, Cal Water, Al Toto Market, Mid Valley. Um, Selma Pellet, who did a beautiful job with the bar, um, gate. I called it the, the Ocean Bar. It was very nice. Yes, I was like the third security guard with all those Raider fans, but that's okay. So I, I do wanna say. Um, again, going back to the volunteers for, for this, and again, this is what the citizens have been wanting for Selma. So yes, thank you. That was a, a probably made history there at the park with Pepe Marquez. And I did have somebody, a couple of people asked me. Why is um, uh, the city paying for Pepe Marquez? And what I wanted to explain to um, these people that are new. With the Selma Enhancement Corporation, that's the, the nonprofit organization for the city of Selma. So with the sponsorship of Cal Water, Total Market. Um, Mid Valley, um, their, their sponsorship, the beer sales. Uh, uh, it all goes into the Selma Enhancement Corporation and that's the nonprofit organization that they use. So they could get a write-off for their businesses. But I do wanna say Reyes Gallardo, Armando Guerra, Brian um, Tabelos. Uh, Letty uh, Gallardo, uh, Fernando Montemayor, his wife. Um, Belinda Osiguerra, those people were outstanding with the beer. They opened one thousand eleven beers. Um, and uh, they, they, they opened them and let's not forget Moses Stites. They didn't get a break. They were lucky to sip some water, but they worked hard because they saw so many people enjoying themselves, friends, families. Uh, people haven't seen generations in so many years and it was just amazing to see all those people have an amazing time. And you heard everybody talking about, this is what Selma's about. This is what we're talking about. And again, I just wanna say, um, the, the donations that were made, um, uh, the revenue. It was eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. That's with sponsorship, beer sales and tips. The total expenses were eight thousand three hundred and nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. So we're at three thousand eight hundred and. Fifty-five cents balance. We're still hoping that after um, Donaghy um, sees everything that we followed. Uh, we'll be receiving another check from them. That'll be great. And I would like to say thank you to Donaghy Sales as well. They were also a sponsor. And like um, Osiguetta stated and all these other council members that want more bigger and better events. We already started a fund that we made the money for with the volunteers and everybody who's helped. And the sponsorships were ready for the next one. So let's continue it. And again, you guys will be getting a lot more input from our citizens of Selma. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online or on the phone?
Standby, Mayor. Caller, you're online.
Uh, yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, that was Marys again. Um, yeah, I, I'm calling in because um, I was just about to say what um. Robertson said, I wanted to, again, piggyback off of that. Selma Live was off the chain. It was really great. I heard a lot of good feedback. Still yesterday, a neighbor was saying that, you know, it was a great time. People got together. They hadn't seen family in years and. You know, it was like a reunion. People for classmates that they hadn't seen since graduation, um, you know, years. So it was a beautiful event from what everybody was talking about and um, they want more. They said it was very peaceful, you know, there was just. It was, there wasn't any fights. Everything was just, you know, the community getting together. And um, yes, I also wanted to thank the same people, the volunteers who went out there, didn't get paid, didn't get. You know, anything to eat and didn't get water or just of, you know, a sip of water here and there because they were so busy. Um, you know, again, shout out, yes, to uh, Letitia Gallardo, who went out there, was out there since the morning. Setting up with Rose Robertson, the bar area. Um, uh, Brian Ramirez, Commissioner, Planning Commissioner. Um, also Armando Guerra, Planning Commissioner, Reyes Gallardo, Lee Norn and Leila Gallardo, who also helped. Um, sell the sodas and water. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone and thank you to council. This is what I'm talking about. You know what? Year, about a year and a half ago, I went up there and I said, what are our compensation for paying these taxes? What do we get out of this? There was nothing happening in Selma. But now, we got a lot going on. Look at all these events that are coming up. You know, we've got this Halloween, a Halloween event coming out at the Art Center at the end of October. It's a Halloween costume. Uh, we just had that Depp Depp uh, concert, just the Plaza, what is the Plaza activities, just a lot of things for adults and for children. That we don't have to go out of town. It's coming to us and that's what we're about. So thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment?
Mayor, I see no more hands raised at this time.
Hey, Q. Councilman Adalos, take us home.
Uh, yeah, one last comment, guys. Uh, tomorrow, you know, our, our council group here. Uh, will attend Dennis Luhon's funeral tomorrow. And uh, and the reason why we're attending it. Uh, this particular gentleman spent twenty-eight years in a city council government. And, and I, I have the history, I had the pleasure being with him on the council and also being his friend as well. And um, longtime friend as well. Uh, this gentleman in the past was a history in a city in a Selma. Because uh, guys like him, he was very impressionable. Uh, everybody liked him. Uh, his office was at the barber shop. Uh, his door was open to anybody. But the good thing about him, he was, without him, uh, his co, you know, his comrades in the past. We wouldn't have the Wal-Mart's, we wouldn't have the car dealership Dwight Nelson. Uh, what we have now, you know, uh. Food for Less and all this, uh, the Say Mark, uh, used to be Say Mark Plaza there and uh. You know, over here on this other side, United Market. We would never would have those without these uh, Dennis being on the council. And uh, and also the senior center, renaming the senior center. Uh, and you know, those areas in our community leaders in the past, Dennis was a, an icon in itself. And uh, and tomorrow, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna show up to pay our, our respects uh, to the family. And uh, just give them that proclamation to them. I, I thank everybody that's gonna show up.
Sounds good. Yeah, everybody's invited at eleven o'clock. And with that, we will adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.